Welcome everyone in the audience and everyone at home watching. Starting an hour early tonight to try to get through some more of our zoning code changes and updates. First item, additional materials. Are there any other additional materials tonight?
Staff has no additional materials.
Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Staff has no changes.
And this is the time now for public comments. If anyone would like to address us on anything not on the agenda, please come up and give us your thoughts. If not, then we will go on to city council comments. Are there any city council reports or announcements?
Yeah, I have one, Madam Vice Mayor. And that is, I've been informed that there was some, oh, words in the paper today regarding Vision Capitola and our process here. And I would welcome anyone who was involved in Vision Capitola to please attend one of these meetings because it made it sound like we were in this process ignoring what they told us. And for me at least, and I know for many of you, we're doing nothing of the kind but taking that seriously into consideration. So I welcome anyone who was involved in Vision Capitola to come and attend the zoning meetings with us and make sure that we remember. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, our next meeting will be Saturday morning at 10 o'clock. And everyone's welcome to attend that meeting to continue our discussion from tonight for possible changes to the zoning ordinance. Any other announcements or comments from the council?
I thought that was weird.
Any other staff comments?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I did want to provide you on a quick update on our police chief recruitment process. As you're aware, we'll be interviewing the finalists for the police chief position with a panel interview comprised of both professionals, staff, as well as community members on October 11th. This week, Chief Escalani, myself, and the Assistant to the City Manager met with our recruiter, and we reviewed the results from the preliminary interviews and the recommendations from the recruiter. And we selected six finalists to interview with the city for the police chief position. Four of those candidates are from the Bay Area in Northern California, one's from Southern California, one's from the state of Washington. There are five men and one women who will be interviewed. Three are currently serving or previously served as a chief of police. One is an assistant chief of police, one is a commander, and one is lieutenant. So just wanted to update the council on that process moving forward.
Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Any other staff comments? Then we'll go on to the consent calendar. We have one item on the consent calendar, which is actually two minutes, two of our previous minutes from the September 8th meeting and the September 15th meeting, special meeting of the city council. Are there any questions or corrections or additions?
Oh, I got the long agenda.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is our only item for tonight, continuation of the zoning code update. So this is our, all the rules and regulations for building and development in the city. Most of them have not been updated for many, many years, and they're very antiquated. And so it's, this is a huge process, and it's really exciting that we're finally doing this. So we've, it's been a long process with a lot of meetings with the planning commission and now with the city council. It'll go back to the planning commission and come back to the city council. And we welcome all of your input. Email, or give us a call, or come to the meetings too. Okay, Katie?
Okay, great. With that, I'll begin. Good evening, council. This evening, we're going to continue in our review on the zoning code update. Currently, we're at part three, citywide standards. We left off on chapter 17.74, secondary dwelling units. So I'm gonna just dive into that, go over a couple of the changes that have taken place and how this chapter is applied. So secondary dwelling units, we've expanded the zones. Previously, it was only for the R1. It now includes the R1, the multifamily zone residential, RM, and the mixed-use neighborhood. The review process is that if an application comes in that complies with all the standards for a secondary dwelling unit, it's an administrative permit that's approved by staff, and an applicant comes in with a building permit to get approved. If they do not meet all the standards that are within the code, then it requires a conditional use permit, which would then go to planning commission. It would be noticed to all the, notice like a conditional use permit, and reviewed and approved by the planning commission. Design requirements, the specifics, the design requirements, one thing that is new is that there are no deviations that are allowed for minimum lot size, which is 5,000 square feet. There's no deviations allowed for required, the primary residence is required on the site, and that there's only one allowed per parcel. One item that was asked to be discussed is the 5,000 square foot minimum lot size. So I'll, I can take a break here if you want to discuss that.
Well, I just have a question. I have a secondary dwelling unit, so I'm wondering if I should recuse myself from this discussion because I do have...
It's existing though. You're not gonna build a new one.
No.
So...
Yeah, now you can participate.
Just wanted to let the audience know that. I have a legal secondary dwelling unit.
So I brought that up, and I think when it was put in was when we were considering the overlay and like the Cliffwood Heights area because it's a large side lot, and there was a lot of pushback. You know, it wasn't generally accepted that we should do ADUs, and I thought that was probably one of the few places because of the lot size.
Well, we're, I think we're required by the state to allow ADUs.
Right.
But there's no stipulation as to the minimum lot size, correct?
Right. So we're trying to minimize.
Could we not keep it at, I don't have any question with 5,000 square feet. I think it's rational.
Well, obviously, smaller, actually.
Allow them on smaller?
Minimum. Yeah, but a lot on small. I mean, if it works in, why not?
So this was not discussed at the planning commission level. It was brought up by Councilmember Bertrand.
Microphone.
I think, I think that when we first did it, we were concerned about the impact of another building, another structure on the lot to the neighbors.
Right.
And so it would be most appropriate on our biggest lots, which are Cliffwood Heights, which are 5,000 square feet. So we thought that in the jewel box, it's not really appropriate unless there's a tiny little house there, and you can fit a tiny little other unit there in the north 40s, the same, in Depot Hill, the same, and in the jewel box. And the other areas, lots are small, 40 by 80, most of them, and there just wasn't room to put it anywhere except for Cliffwood Heights.
Yeah. My lot is 5,500 square feet. I wouldn't even contemplate putting an ADU on there. I mean, when you get down to the River View Terrace area and Upper River View, anywhere else in the, you know, in the city, we would have to start looking at the overall lot coverage, and it would start to get really complex. I think making matters a minimum makes sense, unless there's another, there's probably other opinions.
No, well, maybe, like, let's say 4,000, something like that for point of discussion, and let planning decide if it makes sense in terms of density of other places around it. So it seemed like 5,000 was arbitrary. Maybe there's a situation because of all the other places, properties. Okay, for instance, my lot size would qualify for 5,000, but on the other side of my back property line, there's no houses, you know? So suppose in their situation like that, no one would see an ADU if I decided to build one. So I'm just trying to leave some leeway where it makes sense, that's all.
What's the maximum lot coverage of an ADU? 500 square feet, I think?
400. As on the size of a lot, yeah.
For a 5,000 square foot lot, an AD up to 7,500 square foot. It can go up to 500 square feet for the actual ADU.
You could vary the size.
So the question is, do we want to change that for lots and somehow include that calculation in the overall lot coverage? Because if there's a 3,000 or 4,000 square foot lot that has a maximum lot coverage because of a single level, do we cover more of the lot with a 500 square foot ADU? I'm just looking for answers. I'm not coming out in a position somewhere there, I'm just trying to find a way, how would we do that?
Well, they'd also have to provide another parking space, which would be very difficult on a smaller lot to actually provide another additional parking place. You have your one covered, and then your two uncovered, and then you're gonna put a fourth one there. That's gonna be, that would be hard to do.
Well, I do know someone out in the PAC 40 or whatever that put one in the...
North 40.
North 40, excuse me. And they wanted a, what was it, a room to paint, basically, a studio. And so they were forced to do an ADU. They had it attached. Their lot was relatively small compared to mine, and somehow it worked. I guess they had an exemption. So if it was something that could work, I would leave it up to city planning to decide what might fit in, that kind of situation, that's all. I'd just find 5,000 arbitrary, and I think it was because of what was happening at the time when there was some pushback against this. And so we said, okay, let's go for an overlay on a large lot.
But a studio, a working studio is different than an ADU, where you're gonna have somebody living there, and you have to have a bathroom and a bedroom.
Oh, no, they actually had to build an ADU. So they have a bathroom, kitchen.
Well, they didn't have to.
They were required to do it. So they have a living room with a kitchenette and a bathroom and some storage space.
Yeah, but they could have probably just done the storage space.
They were complaining to me that they had to build all these other things, and all they wanted was a studio to paint.
Do you remember that one at all?
I don't know that.
There's probably a story behind it.
Specific example, it may have had something to do with the development of a PD or something like that in which an ADU is required, but other than that, we typically would not require an ADU to be on a...
It was an older house.
You can have a lot that's less than 5,000 square feet and do a detached structure. There's nothing that stops you from doing that, as long as you work to the floor of the ratio. So it only becomes, the 5,000 square feet only comes into play when you're doing it as a separate living unit that would be rented separately. That's where that comes in. Other than that, you can do it up to any size that you want, as long as you meet the FAR and setbacks and parking requirements.
So if I may, because it seems like we're moving off the subject, Jean, are you saying your motion is to go bring it down to 4,000 square feet?
Well, I wanted to bring it down to a lower level and basically have this under discretion of city planning so that they can decide if it made sense.
Is 4,000 the lower level we're thinking of?
I don't know what would be...
We need a motion.
Okay, I'll say 4,000.
I'll second that, just for the interest of discussion.
I think, I think you're opening a can of worms with lot coverage, density, parking. We were, it was a squeeze even to do their, this secondary dwelling unit ordinance to fit it into our small lots in our small town, and that's why we went to 5,000 square feet. But it seemed that it only made sense in those places where there's bigger lots. But if you can bring us an example of where it might work, you know, I'd be happy to look at it, but I don't think it's gonna work on most of our lots.
Can you give an example of a 4,000 square foot lot right across from us, Mike? That whole street show, there's 100 deep and they're 40 wide. Every one of those would fit the 4,000, but they would not fit the 5,000. That's where kind of, but I think of the avenues. I think of Cliffwood Heights, very few in Depot Hill, a few in the jewel box, but not many. But they're, they are there. I don't know, you know, if we're gonna change this, I'd like to give some more thought, Jock. I'd really, I'd like to see, know the repercussions if we change it from this.
Okay.
Any other discussion or comments from the audience or anyone?
I have, I have one question for staff here. In under designing development standards, it talks about its item 17.74.040.
Can I take a vote on the motion first?
Oh, there's no second.
Yeah, there was my second.
Oh, I'm sorry for discussion.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Termini?
No.
Councilmember Petron?
No.
Vice Mayor Harland?
No.
Councilmember Norton?
No.
Okay, Dennis, you wanna go ahead with your question?
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, it talks about prime residence, one prime residence on parcel. What is, what is constructed concurrently mean, what does that mean?
That the owner of the property must either live in a single-family home or within the dwelling unit.
I'm talking about item B here.
One primary residence on parcel. Oh, so there has to be an existing primary residence. So you can't build the secondary unit by itself without a primary residence being on the lot?
The primary residence either needs to be previously existing or constructed at the same time.
You put your microphone.
The primary residence either needs to be pre-existing or constructed at the same time as the second unit. So you could, you could to build both.
What other cases would you have?
You can't construct the second unit first without...
Oh, I see, I see. Okay. But you, let's say, let's say that you had a small house on a fairly large lot. Could you, if it met the criteria, could you say, that's my, that's my secondary unit, and I'm gonna build a primary unit? Could you do that under this? So why do we need this? I don't, I don't understand why.
I think it's just so that, so that it's built concurrently, and you don't have somebody that builds a small house, walks away from a project, and you have something there that's being rented and, you know, sells later on as the development. But I don't know if it's critically important either.
Okay. All right.
So do you want to go through it page by page and sections, chapter by chapter?
I'll go into the next section on this, just to give you an update. So the development standards that apply to these, there are the, there's two stories that are allowed up to 22 feet. There's a unique setback for two stories, that the interior side yard has to be five feet and the rear yard at 10. For a single-story structure, the rear yard is decreased from eight feet to, down to five feet. Parking, at one point, no parking. Well, right now, if you came in with an application, you would not be required to provide parking for the secondary dwelling unit unless you went above the square footage requirements for a single-family home. It's the combined square footage between the two. Under the new code, the planning commission added that one space will be required for a secondary dwelling unit. Also deed restrictions, at one point, we had discussed taking out a deed restriction requiring the resident to live in either the primary or the secondary unit. In the end, when the planning commission reviewed their red lines, they said, actually, we'd like to keep that in, that the owner is required to live in either or.
Unless there's an exception.
Unless there's an exception.
Well, what would constitute hardship? Unique hardship, it says.
Yeah.
I have, I have an example with my granny in it. I might want to go up to Yosemite and work for six months and rent my house for six months. Would you let me do that?
That would be a unique example.
I mean, it's not really hardship, it's my choice, you know, but, but, you know, or the property, I want to go to Europe and travel for six months, you know? Those kind of, I mean, it's not a unique hardship, it's my choice to go travel for six months, but I may choose to do that.
I think those were similar examples referenced by the planning commission during their discussion.
One item that Councilmember Petron asked to discuss this evening was the decrease, to decrease the single-story interior side yard and the rear yard to be consistent with the accessory structures, which are at three feet.
Right. So like to be consistent, that's three feet, and that also allows for someone to go four, or five, or six, or whatever. But the consistency is what I'm looking for, and I didn't quite see the reason why for five feet.
In conjunction with that question, I'd like to refer back to table 17.52-1. Should we not have the same height restrictions on accessories as we do on garages, detached garages?
Yeah.
Just for consistency?
Yeah. I actually put in here to see that table.
Forgot what page is it on? That's on page 52-2.
So we could make that change, that...
And it's not so much a change because there's really nothing that speaks of overall height here. I just think that we need to refer back and make sure that maximum height and setbacks are consistent with detached garages as with ADUs.
So the height is at 15 feet currently for one story?
Well, 12-foot max height at four-foot, at four-foot setbacks.
Yeah.
Nine-foot max height at the wall plate. If it goes above 12 feet, then the setback increases to eight feet. At least, that's what I get from the table and the diagram. And we discussed that, the diagram was, there was a typo of the diagram, should have been 12-foot max height instead of 15.
Right.
But however we go, I think that we should show consistency, because an ADU and a detached garage, effectively, it's a structure near the neighbors.
Yeah, I think that's a good comment. One of the observations staff had after our last meeting, we talked about different development standards for accessory structures, is what we heard was, we were developing a lot of customized setback standards for the individual type of accessory structure. And I think one of our thoughts after that meeting was, we're gonna come back and see if we can't standardize those, so we don't have a table and every structure has a different setback.
Right, because I believe that the impact to your neighbor will be the same regardless of the use of the structure. Therefore, if we don't allow anything bigger than 12, four feet from the property line, it should be the same for an ADU.
Is that consensus?
I think so.
I would also point out that, you know, we mentioned before the meeting, just the recent legislation signed by Governor Brown, I believe, two days ago on second units. Parking is one of the issues that it addresses. I need to delve into that a little further. But I know, at least for attached units, they're saying local agencies can no longer require parking. I'm not sure if that's true for detached. So this new standard that the planning commission recommended to add a parking space requirement for all units may or may not withstand the new law that was just passed. So we'll look into that and report back.
That would be too bad, because that's really gonna impact the neighborhood. I mean, you can see neighborhoods already where in the evening, it's totally parked on the street because there's not enough parking on the sites of the multiple-family or the single-family homes. Totally parked, totally packed on many of our streets at night. It's pretty shocking. It never used to be like that. Most of the cars were off-site and not all on the streets. It was, used to be only about half full, now it's completely full.
I think that most of the ADUs that we're gonna, that's gonna be provided in this town here are gonna be to the rear of the lot, is that correct? Automatically, you're probably putting a driveway to the back, so you're creating a parking spot whether you, you know, want to or not. You're actually creating one back there.
If it's new construction, but if it's all old, if it's an old house, they're not gonna put in a new driveway.
Well, they would have to to get, oh, you're saying just walk to the back?
Yeah, like walk to the back, like mine is.
Okay. Could you explain two-story? What happens with that?
Two stories are allowed to go up to 22 feet in height, and the setbacks, there's a five-foot interior setback, so five-foot side yard, and then a 10-foot rear yard setback.
But that requires planning commission approval?
And it requires planning commission approval, correct.
You know, the city of Santa Cruz does this a lot, where they have garages, particularly in the PAC, and they allow a secondary, a secondary unit. Because it is an ADU, they don't, they don't require anything but administrative permit. I, you know, I, as far as lot use, it's better to stack something than it is to actually put a single story. And so I don't know why we want to discourage somebody to do that. If they met the setback requirements for a two-story structure, and they meet the setback requirements, and they can provide the parking, I don't think we should do anything to discourage people from doing that. In other words, I'm not so sure that this is an item that we really need to have a planning commission approval on. I think it could be done administratively, because it is an ADU.
But there were neighbors that wanted to review it at the time. I think that when we were, when this whole thing came up, we were concerned about the impact on the neighbors, and we wanted to give the neighbors as much of a chance to review it and participate as possible. And they only have limited amount of ability now to do that, so I think that's why we did it.
One alternative, if it was the council's desire, is we could require a minor use permit or some other permit that requires noticing, but not necessarily public hearing, where if there is a neighbor that's concerned, they get notice, and under the minor use permit, they could request a hearing. We'd be obligated to hold that hearing if they request, or short of that, there'd always be an appeal process. That might be a middle ground if you're interested.
So I could see the noticing, and on 17.4, there's a list of findings that have to be met for conditional use permit. Do some of these apply to just a situation where you don't have a condition use? You know, things like excessive noise, traffic, and such like that? So it seems to me the neighbors should have a chance to weigh in. So I agree with you that noticing, and then if there's an issue, neighbors will definitely speak up.
So the findings that are listed there are when a CUP is required. So those will only be second units, which do not meet the prescribed development standards that are laid out, or if it's a second story, then you have to make these findings. If it's administrative over the counter, these findings aren't considered.
We're already writing into the ordinance that it must be occupied, even the primary or the secondary unit has to be occupied by the owner. So you have some controls over it. And noise, I can understand with it in CV or where you, you're doing rentals, but these are not open rentals. So noise is not really an issue with a situation like this unless you have a bad neighbor, I guess, and that happens everywhere at any time. But I think that there should be a simpler process. If we're gonna encourage ADUs here, and a logical land use decision would be to put it on top of your garage, I think we should find a method that we can do that within the community. And I think your idea is good, is if, if we notice, and if it's appealed or asked for a hearing, we go to a hearing. If not, we just let it be handled administratively. And this comes back to a point with how the planning commission works, because if you, if you burden the planning commission with signed permits and this type of thing, you're taking their ability to actually function as a good planning commission away from them because you're overloading them. Let, let the planning commission deal with issues that are important to the community, major developments. We have, we have R1 standards in there that they regulate, new construction, that's all, that's all part of it. But, but things like this or signed permits, we should really, you know, these are things that we, it can be handled administratively, and I think your suggestion is good, Rich, because you have the option for neighbors to say, okay, we want a hearing.
And I completely agree with Rich's there, and I realize that the findings are for conditional use things, but it's the idea that the neighbors should have a chance to chime in and express their concerns.
So I'd like to make a motion, if I could, on this. I'd like to make a motion that we allow two-story secondary units or ADA units to get, to receive administrative permit with a public noticing, that any member of the public could appeal it and ask for a public hearing, ask for the hearing, and that we allow that as long as they're observing all the zoning standards for that ADU for, for two-story.
Is this just for, on top of garages, or how about other ADUs?
It could be anywhere. It could be anywhere, it's two-story. It's just, it's just that, it just happens to work on top of garages. But as long as they're meeting all the zoning standards for that, for that district, they'd be allowed to do it administratively, and we're providing an ADU.
But don't we require an ADU to be detached from the primary residence?
It could be attached.
No, it can be attached or detached.
I'll second that.
Comments? Questions?
And we do full noticing on this, as we would with any...
Yeah, based on the direction, what I would do is, we would change it from conditional use permit to minor use permit. Many of these findings would still apply. We would send out a notice, I believe, within 100 feet, well, smaller radius, and anybody that requests a hearing, we would obligate that and bring it before the planning commission at the applicant's expense.
Comments from the audience? Would anyone like to speak on this item? Comments from the council members?
Yes, so are we ignoring the situation where an ADU unit is a single story and not doing a notice?
Single story by law, we cannot, we cannot make an administrative hearing.
Right. Okay, so maybe a slight difference, but I'd like to consider the possibility that we do let the neighbors know when an ADU unit is being included. And some of the issues that, like are in the findings, might be appropriate for them to have a chance to weigh in on.
Well, there's, you can't do that by law, can you? You know, I... You can notify them, but you can't appeal them.
You can notify them. Yeah, that's right. I just want a notification so people know.
You may be able to notice them, but, you know, my concern would be, what do you do with that notice? If it's an administrative permit and we're obligated to issue that permit, you know, the public might expect us to be able to do something, it wouldn't be appealable. I don't know what the purpose of noticing that would be, when there's really nothing we could do to help concerned neighbors in that case.
There's no way that city plan could help in that regard?
Yeah, I mean, if it's an ADU that's covered by state law that shall be issued by a city without any development standards, you know, or meeting the development standards with no discretion, I don't think there's anything we could do to help a concerned neighbor if it met those requirements.
So that means an ADU with any kind of design is, as long as it fits in with our requirements, which are fairly minimal?
Right.
Can be built, and the neighbors would have no say at all?
That's right.
I find that problematic.
doing a notice?
Single-story by law, we cannot, we cannot make an administrative hearing.
Right. Okay, so maybe a slight difference, but I'd like to consider the possibility that we do let the neighbors know when an ADU unit is being included. And some of the issues that, like are in the findings, might be appropriate for them to have a chance to weigh in on.
Well, you can't do that by law, can you?
You know, I-
You can notify them, but you can't appeal them.
Yeah, that's right. I just want a notification so people know.
You may be able to notice them, but, you know, my concern would be, what do you do with that notice? If it's an administrative permit and we're obligated to issue that permit, you know, the public might expect us to be able to do something. It wouldn't be appealable. I don't know what the purpose of noticing that would be when there's really nothing we could do to help concerned neighbors in that case.
There's no way that city plan could help in that regard?
Yeah, I mean, if it's an ADU that's covered by state law that shall be issued by a city without any development standards, you know, or meeting the development standards with no discretion, I don't think there's anything we could do to help a concerned neighbor if it met those requirements.
So that means an ADU with any kind of design, as long as it fits in with our requirements, which are fairly minimal-
Right.
-can be built, and the neighbors would have no say at all.
That's right.
I find that problematic.
That's the, that's the state law, unfortunately. But that's why I'm going to vote against the motion, because I think if a two-story structure is being built in somebody's backyard, it's going to be an impact on the neighbors. If it's 580 or 600 square feet, two stories, neighbors are going to say, how come I didn't, you know, this isn't going to go to a hearing? I just, I'm going to have to appeal it? That was, that was, that was our discussion when we first started talking about this, is a two-story was different than a one-story. Two-story was more of an impact on the neighbors. And we wanted to let them know, give them a chance to come here and talk about it, and give us their thoughts about it.
Just one point of clarification. Wouldn't be an appeal under a minor use permit. They would just be, they request a public hearing, applicant pays for it, so they don't take anything out of their pocket. They call us, send us an email, say we want a hearing. We would.
Yeah, but I mean, that's a hard burden for a lot of neighbors to have to do that. They're, you know, they don't even know the process, but they get this notice that says there's going to be a, an ADU, and then they have to come down, and then they have to appeal it. That's why I like it automatically. If it's two-story, they have, it gets a hearing. But I understand your concern that, you know, if we can make it easier for applicants and make it easier for the Planning Commission, we should. But that's an intrusion, a two-story building next to somebody, think of it, next to your house, 600 square feet, and it just, you know, sails through.
Are we saying that it still has to meet two-story R1 setbacks? Is that the intent of the motion?
It would have to meet the setbacks for a two-story building, which has a five-foot interior side yard and a 10-foot rear yard setback.
So that seems like there's probably three places in the city that that can happen. I would have to question whether anyone would be able to get by with this administrator review. So I will vote for it, but it seems, you know, fruitless, since you'd have this two-story secondary dwelling unit with R1 setbacks, and chances are, the house is complying with the R1 setbacks, and not much else will fit. We just, you know, cut the legs off of two-story ADUs, basically.
Well, again, Mike, you can also go back, it can be attached too. So in other words, it could be attached, it could be a two-story structure in there, the ADU could be attached to the house in the rear, and we're providing an ADU, and we're still meeting all the, all the setback requirements.
And still be able to meet the, it's true. I mean, if you look across the street from where we live, there are a couple of lots that are 100 feet deep, and they could put an ADU in the back, matching the, you know, the style of your house, and come nowhere near the rear yard setback.
Yeah. It gives another option, design-wise, without, because you're talking, when you have to go through a use permit process in the city, you can almost add, right away add $5,000 to the cost of that construction, because it's a double process to go through. And just the fees by the city create that in, in the process. So what you're doing, if you want to encourage people to do ADUs, design-wise, it's actually, if you can work it out, is to put them on an upper level, then you're not covering the whole lot. Our lot coverage is, which we don't have a calculation for, essentially, the design-wise you can print up. So if we can encourage people to do that, and we meet all the, we meet all the standards, we meet all the standards, and we, and we can do it, and still publicly notice.
A scenario, most garages are on one side or the other of a home. If they were to make the second story an ADU, that garage is now non-conforming because they can't cover the entire footprint of the garage, because they don't meet the second-story setbacks. So the ADU becomes a closet.
Or they, or they build a new garage. It just, it could be just a new garage in the back with it.
Well, and that's what it's going to have to be, because most garages wouldn't structurally have the weight for a second story. And so they're going to, they would have to reinforce it.
That is true.
Or they're probably just going to tear it down and build another one. But that, I mean, that was for, for the investment of a little granny.
I'm just afraid that in this, we're being, we're going in conflict with what our standards are with regard to the Planning Commission. As soon as you build a new garage in a building in the back, nowhere are we, do we allow anyone to do any kind of addition to their home that you can see without going past the Planning Commission. So I think there's some tension here between this motion and what our Planning Commission standards are.
And a couple of points of clarification is that when you're doing a secondary unit that's attached to the single-family home, it has to meet the single-family residential setback standards. Second story within a single-family would require a design permit, second-story addition. The detached buildings are the ones that have the reduced setbacks. So it has a 10-foot rear yard, where typically your rear yard in the R1 is 20% of the lot length. So just a couple of points of clarification. And the, so if you were to make the motion, I think it should be for a detached-
Detached only?
Only, because otherwise it is tied into the other Planning Commission reviews for a single-family.
You know, there's that nice one over by Dean's Lane, that they added to the left of the house, Spanish-style house, and they made, and the front, there's another front door right there, right next to the other front door. It looks very nice, and it fits on the lot. They got the side back, side yard setback, the height requirement. There was a little bit of concern from the neighbors, maybe, but we allowed it, and I think it, it works well. It blends in nicely.
So it's detached, detached only, second story?
It looks exactly like the house. It looks just like an extension of the house.
Detached, detached only, second story. That meets, meets all the accessory-
R1 requirements.
R1 requirements.
Any other questions or discussion about that? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Termani?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harland?
No. I had a question on 74.4 before we leave this. I like this, number two at the top. Openings, that is doors and windows of these granny units, on exterior walls that are closest to and face adjacent residentially zoned properties, that is the neighbor, shall be designed to minimize privacy impacts and maintain access to light and ventilation on adjacent properties. So I think that, that's really good to consider that. So I don't know whether you're thinking about the, the special glass, or what kind of things you would consider there for privacy, but yet maintaining light and ventilation on adjacent, adjacent properties. Doors, windows, you probably wouldn't, wouldn't want to put a door there, but probably wouldn't, that wouldn't fit. But anyway, if that's clear to you, you think you can apply that. Some of these are kind of vague, and I just don't want applicants coming in to say, you know, what does that exactly mean? Because our whole, our whole code for 30 years, 40 years, has been, well, what does that really mean? So that's what I'm kind of reading as I'm going through this, is it, of course, we can only make it as clear as we can right now, and a couple of years from now, we'll probably say, what, why didn't we make that a little clearer?
Also, Councilmember Bertrand brought up on that same, on F, he had suggested at the very end of the sentence to add, or parking of adjacent residential properties, to make sure that we're really protecting residential properties, but if there's a commercial use next door, that it can be considered a little bit differently. So that's slight edit. But yeah, I think basically it's saying to take into consideration your surroundings, the impacts to neighbors, and make sure you're doing your building placement correctly, and looking at their enjoyment of their property as well as your own.
But it can be argued. I mean, you could argue one way, and applicant could argue the other way, and it's best if we don't have too many arguments. But I guess you could say that about a lot of these things. And then I have a question on 74.5, on number J. The site plan protects views along the ocean and obscene coastal areas. This is one of the findings. Where appropriate and feasible, the site plan restores and enhances the visual quality of visually degraded areas. I didn't think we had language in here to protect views. Is that something new? I think I've seen it a couple of places in here, but we didn't used to have any language about that.
This isn't, it's a good point. We don't protect private views, but, you know, public views, particularly the ocean, is something the Coastal Commission values very highly. And I think adding the word "public" in here, so it's a public view that we're protecting, and not a private view would be a good change.
Okay, okay.
When you, when you start dealing with private views, all you do is create neighborhood wars.
Yeah, because we, you know, public views, obscene, because that's going to come up with the hotel. The hotel's going to block people's view over Mel Camino Medio. So, you know, possibly, possibly. So we have to make sure this language is clear.
On KL-
KL.
On, under the parking, excuse me, under orientation. Design, the design of secondary dwellments show relate to the design of the primary residence by use of similar exterior walls and materials, windows, types, so on and so. Why? I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with mixing architectures.
Well, if it's a new house, that'd be fine. With an old house, you don't want it to look like the old funky house, too.
But I mean, why, why are we dictating aesthetics and design in a case like this? I mean, it's nothing wrong with mixing architecture. In fact, our whole town is a mixture of architecture.
Yeah, I mean, I think at the end of the day, it's kind of a policy call. I think the intent is that you have some continuity of design on a property between the main structure and the accessory structures. I can certainly imagine many cases where maybe that's not desirable. But this is a standard I've seen a number of agencies use, but we could certainly change that or modify it if we'd like.
The term relate to could be replaced with something like some complement. So that, yeah, I thought I could live with, because you still leave room for, for creative design within a project like that.
I'd go for complement.
Any other-
Complement, yeah.
Suggestions from the council? Suggestions from the audience about that language? Okay, maybe by consensus, we can change that to complement. Any other questions on 74-4, 74-5, or 74-6?
I do have something to ask of staff. I was wondering if staff could explain how the deed restrictions work when the unit's built, and how this is continued after the sale of the house, and how the public still has the benefit of those restrictions.
Sure. At the time, when an applicant comes in for a building permit, we require a deed restriction. So it has to be recorded at the county and at that point. And it says that the, it's tied to ownership, so title can change onto a new owner, but the new owner is required to either live in the primary residence or the secondary unit. So it runs with the property, as long as there's two properties on the land. So with that, any more questions on this chapter, or should we head into parking? Have we done with this one? Okay. So we had discussed at length, a few meetings ago, the Planning Commission, the recent changes regarding the, the larger policy questions that came up regarding the Central Village. And I do not have many slides on the beginning of this chapter due to the discussions that took place in the direction at that meeting. The Planning Commission looked at your requests to, for the INLU program, and also for the Central Village, talking about the, the parking district. And they, they accepted, you had asked them to relook at the shared parking, and they did include shared parking for the mixed-use village to be included within the draft. So I did circulate updated parking, parking chapter, and hopefully that is within your binder now, that shows that change. But I guess we'll start off by talking about, if there are any comments about applicability of this section, or replacing existing uses or new uses, but I do not have slides going back to that at this point.
What was the Planning Commission's, what were their thoughts on just not allowing carports, period?
Oh, there, the way in which the carports are written up now is that their garage is required, and that a carport would be an exception to the rule, and that in order to get a carport, you'd have to come for the Planning Commission with the design permit application, and that you'd have to show that a garage is practically infeasible on the lot due to the built conditions, and all the design standards within the new code must be met, so.
My first question, has you ever seen a carport that works?
Yes, that one, I took a picture of that one up there. That's in a mobile home park, actually, in Aptos.
That's, that's a different situation. I mean, mobile home parks, I think, stand alone with regard to carports.
Cars down there.
And that one's, that one's a little, a little overly fancy with the rock on the bottom and so forth. It totally matches the, the mobile home next to it, architecturally and design and materials-wise. And it's really beautiful. But it's a good example of how you can build something, not just have a little canvas tent. You can build something, it looks very nice.
One of the comments that we heard, I don't know if it was from the public or Planning Commissioners at hearing quite a while ago, is that advantage of carports is people tend to use them for parking rather than storage. Whereas a garage, they often use them for storage, parking the street.
Good point.
The problem is, Rich, is when they use their carport for storage.
That's where you put your, that's where you put your boat, right?
That's right.
That's where we do tarps and ports.
Boxes and tarps. I'm with you, Mike. I would, I could drop carport from, from any visual criteria in this city.
I feel better that it requires design review, so. And it requires a variance, or just design review, or?
A design permit.
Just a design permit. Okay, so that's a carport of Planning Commission.
Yep, page 76-10, and under E. So it would-
What the wonderful part of it, though, is that they, they keep your car cleaner. When your car is out all the time and it's not covered, it gets so dirty quickly. And so at least if you have something to park it under, it does protect it a bit from, from the elements.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
We didn't just leap ahead to 76-11, did we?
Well, my next slide is 76-12. So any comments before that?
Let's see if there's any questions.
Did we just jump?
Yeah, we want you to carry on. We were, I'd just like to, see if there's any questions, page by page.
Did we just jump from 76-1 to 76-10?
Seems that way.
And we just backpedaled? Okay, all right.
Well, we had, we had discussed the village previously at a other meeting, so I didn't create slides to go back and discuss the village again, but we can, if you want to start on 76-2.
Well, just let everybody have a chance to look at it, see if there's any concerns. Otherwise, we can, is there any concerns in the, you have one?
Yeah, I had a concern, and I did bring it up, but I was hoping you could share it with staff, I mean, with the city council and other staff in the audience. How do we deal with parking studies? So my issue was, we're asking for a space per room, like in a hotel, but then there's also staff that works in the hotel. And so you mentioned that there's a parking study that details what the actual requirements are and the impact on the neighborhood, or let's say downtown Espinot area. So I was wondering if you could explain how that works and the discretion City Planning has.
Okay, so typically, when a parking study is required, the, we'll take in the application, the, we'll ask the applicant not to do the study, we'll hire a consultant at the cost is, goes back to the applicant, and then a parking study is done by a professional engineer. When the professional engineer looks at the use, we had discussed the example of a hotel, that there are different standards that are set up through the ITE standards for hotels that will look at, what is the level of service at the hotel? If it's your typical Best Western, where there's not much service going on, but you've got your room and maybe a lobby, the parking demand's going to be a little bit less. If it's a hotel that has a really nice, like even a conference center or meeting rooms, there's a restaurant use tied in, they're going to tie a different standard to that. So they, they do have the engineering book that looks at, what is the demand based on the rating of the hotel or type of hotel? And then that study is looked at, and they also look, look at the different times of year, and how busy the hotel is expected to be over the course of a year. And then the study will come out with a, a number that will say, well, occupancy is typically at 65%. For safety's sake, we put it at 70, and this is what we think the required parking on-site should be. And that's how they come up with the parking demand. Within the code, under hotel, currently it's listed as one space per room, plus additional, in the village, it says plus additional spaces as required by the Planning Commission, if it's a hotel with less than, with 20 or less rooms. When it's above 20, it just states simply that a parking demand study is required. So within the greater Capitola area, not just tied to the village, the standard for a hotel is one per room, and then one per, I think, 300 square feet of office. So with that, we could also add language about, and as required by the Planning Commission, or require that a study be done as well, if you'd like to add additional language to the table for citywide parking standards for hotels. But that is how a hotel would be looked at in the village.
Concerns about that, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, if staff is, is fine with how it is right now, I just want to make sure that, you know, it's adequately mentioned in our code that we will be addressing these issues through a study, and that any developers should expect that. that we will be addressing these issues through a study, and that any developers should expect that.
So I'd like to draw-
The study's driven by the city, right?
It is, and on page seventy-six dash eight, this is after the tables. Item F says additional required parking, that the planning commission may require more onsite parking than required by the table if the planning commission determines that additional parking is needed to serve the proposed use and to minimize adverse impacts. So if there was a hotel coming in along Forty-first that seemed pretty complicated and had a lot of accessory things going on with it, the planning commissioner's staff would say, for this use, we'd like to, you know, we're going to require a parking study, and that is covered within the code.
Yeah, because I remember when the Fairview was being built, the neighbors had adequate time to express their concerns about delivery and also parking, I believe.
Seems like that's covered, so.
Yeah, okay.
Back on seventy-six dash three, and it's, goes for two pages, I need to do it. Parking standards for different types of business uses. I'm going to give you an example of what sixty square foot means. Sixty, a, a normal round table, I have a, a normal round table in my, in my dining room, and it has four chairs on it, and I measured it, it's actually, from the back of the chairs when there's four people sitting on it, it's approximately eight feet in both directions. That's sixty-four square feet. Well, that sounds fine for a table, but what happens is, is you can't, in that, in that category, you can't back your chair up. In other words, you're going out of it, you're going out of it. So I think sixty square foot is unreasonable for a restaurant to use as a figure for, for one parking spot, for sixty. It should be at least an area that you can walk behind like waiters do, or have that area. In other words, there's a lot of room within a restaurant that, that is unusable, but it's part of that serving area. So what really makes sense and more, is more sense is either, either ten by ten or twelve by twelve, which is a hundred and forty-four, or one hundred square feet makes more sense, because that's, that's the usable area, and you look in Architectural Diagram Book, it'll tell you that. A hundred square feet is what you need for a table. So sixty square foot is not a true figure to what restaurants use. I mean, if you had a single two-person table, that works for that. It doesn't work for a four-person table, which is what most, most restaurants do. And so I think a reasonable figure here should be one hundred square feet, not sixty square feet, for allowable, for, for, for each parking space. Because now you're not allowing for any waiters or waitresses to walk behind them or even service those tables. We're just allowing for the table and the four chairs to be in there.
Mr. Mayor? I'd have to agree with that, that makes, that's pretty common sense. So that would speak to a different floor area calculation for bars and lounges versus restaurants and cafes. Or maybe bars and lounges, sixty square feet makes some sense. But for restaurants, surely, that's a point well taken.
So the point is, you want to require less parking?
Well, I, I, if you're, if you're saying one car space per, for sixty square feet, I'm just telling you what sixty square fe, foot means.
Right, so what I'm, so if now you're going to raise it to a hundred, then you're going to require less parking?
Yeah, less parking, yes. But, you know, let's, let's really take a look at the village right now, and that, if you took every restaurant and bar and, and even retail establishment down there, every one of them are not conforming, because none of them have parking. So why should we set a standard? It doesn't matter what the number means to them, because it doesn't mean anything. And now if they want to expand and we go this twenty percent figure, I'm going to talk about that in a second, but, but if we go to that, we apply that, then, then, then you have application. But there is no application in reality in the village. There's no application that's there. But, but if someone wanted to do improvements to their, their property, and, and, and could figure out a way to do it and get the parking, then, then a more reasonable, a reasonable figure to use would be a hundred square feet and not sixty square feet.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll call for the public in a minute. I said, I'm going to let us talk about it for a minute, then I'll bring you up. Just want to make sure I understand where we're going, and then I'll let you guys all weigh in on this.
Just some extra context, you know, I know this has been an issue that's been discussed by the city for, for many years. I know we did prepare a parking study for the village, I believe in two thousand and eight. We compared our parking ratios to other agencies in Santa Cruz County and maybe in the surrounding counties, and also on the Institute of Traffic Engineer ratios. And it found that ours, particularly for the village, are very restrictive compared to everybody else. So I think if you wanted to loosen those, you certainly could do so and make very solid findings. As it relates to treating bars and restaurants differently, that makes me squirm a little bit. Because, you know, I think most restaurants have a bar service, particularly in the village. And I think what we would have is then, well, what's a bar and what's a restaurant? I think everyone would claim to be a restaurant, and it's just hard to define, hard to measure. I think from an administrative standpoint, it would be preferable to treat them the same, unless it was a standalone bar or standalone restaurant. But when you intermix them, it could be a little tricky.
No comments? Yeah, I'm concerned about, you know, going to adopting something that's going to relax the parking and require less, okay? Because I, when I, when I do, especially I look at what you're talking about for the bar. But before we discuss it, I'll go ahead and see, any, for the public, want to weigh in on this one? Go ahead.
It's probably over the waterfall by now, but I brought this up before. The old In-Lu parking program did not tie square footage to parking. It tied seating to parking, which was really kind of beautiful, because it did away with all this, well, what's a bar, what's a restaurant, what's a coffee shop, what's a doughnut shop, what's a pastry shop? It said, okay, whatever kind of food establishment you want, or drinking establishment, you have to provide X number of seats that you want. Well, how is that determined? And the old In-Lu parking program offered the ability to add seedings, not square footage, add seats for a certain amount of money. And I, Dennis, I think it was about ten thousand dollars for two and a half seats, I believe, the original.
I don't remember any.
And I think it dropped down to seven. You know, Ron Graves called it a disaster. It was a disaster, because no one kept track of the, the money. But personally, I thought that was a heck of a good deal. But now, you know, I, I, I think we're caught in this never-ending swirling that's always going to be changing. What is, what is a restaurant? What is, you know, all these different establishments? So that's, that's just a thought.
Thanks. Anyone else in the public on this topic? Okay, bring it back. Any other comments? Where I'm struggling is, I, I, I think of a place like Ty Basil, okay, which has booths. And, and what I'm saying, in my vision, are those booths are probably six by six, thirty-six square feet? And if some party of four comes in and parks one car, then we're pretty much saying that you only have to have one, for three tables, you need one parking place. Okay, and I'm thinking, okay, and I, I'm weighing your point about we may be tight. Where you were saying we're over-restrictive on our number, requiring sixty? By comparison to other cities?
By comparison to other cities, but maybe they don't have the same situation, so, you know.
And then when, and when we get into the bar, it's like even less square footage. Because I, I don't want to say, okay, this bar can have sixty people in there, they only have to provide six parking places because of the square footage. I think we, we go against what we're trying to protect. So I'm not sure, I'm real anxious to change those numbers. I mean, I can see where you're saying, if we're really tight with them, I mean, I'm open to other opinions on this, but I'm just thinking that just to randomly say to bump it to sixty to a hundred might be a little bit of a giveaway. Maybe there's a compromise number in there, I don't know.
Well, there, there's no middle to get a parking spot anyway. We, we, we never, we close that door. We won't let them have the, the access parking spaces, so there's no avenue now. But what a realistic figure is, if you're going to use it, should be a hundred square, a hundred, hundred in this thing. And that's, we're writing into the doctrine here.
I understand.
And so what, what it does is, if you want the village, and, and there's a lot of people who like to see this stay exactly like it is today, and they're never improve their building, or never, never see new businesses, or never change, then, then this, this, that's what this document does. It doesn't allow you, it's not going to allow you any avenue to make improvements to your businesses or to do it. And that's what we created here. And, and that's true of all, all the parking standards we have all the way through here on the Central Village. And, and I, I notice a lot of people say the village should never change. Well, it hasn't changed. It hasn't changed in thirty years. But the point is, the point is, is that, that you're, you're not giving any more parking spots away. It doesn't change the parking feature, it just makes a realistic figure in which restaurants can use to determine what their parking requirement is. That's all.
Well, I'm comfortable with it as it is, because we just did allow them, with that new language that we talked about last time, that an eating and drinking establishment may expand by twenty percent of the existing floor area of the business without providing additional parking. So I'm willing to give them that, let them expand in their, in their internal building layout, et cetera, enlarge the dining area, additions to the size of the business within an existing building footprint. So that gives them some room to expand. And I, I think that'll, that'll be, that'll be a test of, you know, whether that works, and without asking to require more parking.
I like that particular allowance, question of staff. If, let's say, my Ty Beach Grill, you know, building is probably used refreshing. Let's say they had a major remodel, improve the village, you know, ground-up remodel, they wouldn't have to provide any parking, because they already had a use permit for the amount of seating area that they have right now, correct?
Yeah, as long as they didn't have square footage.
Up to twenty percent.
Right.
So they could expand their seating area by twenty percent and still be safe. They wouldn't have to start from scratch and do a calculation.
The expansion needs to occur within the building, so they couldn't do a twenty percent addition. It would be with, between the buildings, they could expand twenty percent, or they could have an outdoor dining area.
They could increase their, their dining area by twenty percent, and not have to provide more parking. I think that's pretty liberal.
Gives them a-
I, I think that provision does give, because essentially, Dennis, it turns the sixty square feet into seventy-two square feet.
I mean, I can't, I can't even guess that. I, I don't quite understand, I, I'm not against the twenty percent, but I don't quite understand. It's not fair that twenty percent of Zeldas is not the same as twenty percent of Ty Basil. Ty Basil's a half, half a table. Zeldas is four tables. So are we, are we giving preference to, is there another method, method, means of measurement in doing this? Another example I could give to you is, is that, peace of my heart, they, they own that whole building there, okay? What if they came for an application to take the whole building or to, or to put, put seating, outside seating up on their deck or anything? We, we don't have an avenue then to, to, to allow them to expand. They could do twenty percent, but they're combining the building. We, we got to give people avenues to make businesses successful without giving a larger footprint within the, in the village. And that's, that, that is really a good idea to do that with that building. In fact, we should be encouraging that guy to do that. And, and it, we, we will kind of set the rules that the buildings along the front is they're stay a single story, okay? Although some of them are two-story now. But if we close, what we're doing here with this thing in the village is we're closing the door. Closing the door. And so giving, giving adequate space and numbers for, and Bob's right, a number of seats may be a better method to do this. If you, then you have something you can count and actually measure to, and do it, do it statistically, other than doing, doing a square footage. Square footage doesn't really apply to, to human scale or to human use. I don't know, I just, I just think that regardless of how our feelings are about where the village should go, I just think that there has to be avenues to improve businesses and make, and make them successful. And right now, this doesn't give any, any-
But the twenty percent does, that'll help.
Well, yeah, they, they do it in, they're going to do it inside their own building. They can't-
John, go ahead, John had a question, go ahead, John.
Yeah, I just had a question of staff. It seems to me this might affect our In-Lu parking program. So if we reduce the requirements for parking, that's going to free up more spaces in our existing parking, like in Lower Pat Cove. Do you have any comments on that? Because the requirement-
I don't think it would have any effect, is the In-Lu policy as it currently-
Not the policy, but how many we actually have. So when the spaces were all counted up, you know, we, we need so much for Zeldas, we need so much for San Bar, we need so many for all these different places. You know, I wasn't part of that, but I, you were, and I presume that's how we came up with our need. So if all of a sudden we reduce the number of parking spaces we need per site, then we're going to have even more surplus than we have right now. That's my comment.
You know, I'm not certain if that would be the end result.
I think the way I would best respond to that is, is the, the deficit, the parking deficit that was determined wasn't based on our code. It was based on a overall comprehensive parking study of the uses in the village and the available parking. So it really wasn't based on looking at our code and determining how many spaces were going to be needed in the lots to meet the demand that was in the village. So changing our standards wouldn't affect that calculation. And that calculation formed the basis, you recall that I think it was a hundred and eighty-seven space deficit when we built the two hundred and, Nelson's here, he can correct me. Two hundred and thirty-two new spaces in Lower Pat Cove. It was the delta between the two hundred and thirty-two and the old deficit that determined the spaces that were available in the In-Lu program. So it was never based off our existing code, if that helps clarify.
Okay, so we didn't say how many parking spaces were needed for Zeldas or for any other spot, that's what you're saying? So we have, we're, we're trying to define how many parking spaces are needed for downtown, and we didn't look at how many spaces are needed for each individual business?
We did, we did, but it was, it was taken, it was, it was not based off our code, it was based on the I T, the I T E standards. So basically, what was done was, the total square footage of restaurant area in the village was added up, the total square footage of office space, total square footage of retail, all the housing units. That was, those numbers were crunched, and there was a generated total demand. There was a count of the total spaces, the entire village area, and that's how the delta was, was created. So it wasn't based on our code, it was based on more use data, if you will.
Okay, so what's the relationship between the square foot here, one per sixty square feet and the I D T, which was the standard that we used to figure out how many parking spaces we needed? Is, is there, is there any connection between those two? So, so how can I say sixty square, square feet is a, is something to actually go on if we, we actually did the parking study based on a standard?
Right. So, so a little bit of history on this. Many of you council members were around when we did this last, the last time we messed with parking standards for, for the restaurants. I think it was back in two thousand and nine. And at that point, that's when we separated, at that point, I think it was one per sixty square feet for the entire restaurant was our requirement. And at that point, we, we made two key changes. One was we separated the front of house from the back of house, because the back of house doesn't have the same parking demand, obviously, that the front of house, the publicly accessible space. And the other cleanup was a point that the Community Development Director made recently, earlier this evening, was that we just said it's sixty square feet for the publicly accessible spaces in any eating establishment. And the intent behind that was, we were getting a lot of gaming before that, where someone would come in and it was a different standard if you were a bakery, or if you were a bar, or if you were a restaurant, and people were just sort of trying to label things differently on plans. So the notion that it's one per sixty, or one per seventy, or one per one hundred, whatever figure the council comes up with, across the board for eating establishments, drinking establishments, is certainly, has practical utility for staff in terms of consistency of review.
So- Go ahead. One, so the end result of, if you were to change this and bring it up to a hundred, say, one per one hundred, the end result would be, right now, it would change nothing, because there, within the In-Lu policy, a restaurant is not allowed to apply for the In-Lu. If, if you were to change the hotel standard to a higher one per, like, or, let's say, half a space per bedroom, then that would have an impact, because if someone came in for a hotel and they applied for additional rooms, then they would be required, they, they would have less parking that they would purchase in your In-Lu program. But currently, if we change that number in the code, it would not impact anything, except for if, say, the market tile came for a full redevelopment, and they do have onsite parking, then they wouldn't be required to have as many parking spaces onsite for a new restaurant.
That, that's a great point. And, and I was just going to go on something like that, because I think we're really close here. It's like, if, if Mr. Gabob wanted to add a second floor, this, the hundred foot would just allow him to have, have to provide less parking, by forty percent of whatever the number is, and that's your point. So this really has no impact. I was personally inclined to go with Councilwoman Harland's approach. I think the, the, the twenty percent doesn't lock down the village, Dennis. It gives them something. I mean, if you said it closed the door, I mean, twenty percent is better than nothing, okay? So I, I don't know that there is support for a hundred feet. I think I heard Councilman Termini say he liked the idea of the twenty percent, so there may be consensus for the twenty percent being adequate? Or is there any inclination to raise it to a hundred?
Well, I would, I would have a tendency to raise it to a hundred just for restaurants and cafes. But I also think that the idea of the seating, that throws us off into a whole other area. Because the seating does make more sense rather than square footage. Would, would, yeah, and we're talking about something, we're just, how many angels can dance in the head of the pin here? If it's, it's a calculation that the staff will never bring themselves to use, really?
Possibly not.
But counting, counting chairs and tables was a headache. It was a headache, because they, we'd go down and count them, and they'd remove them, and then two days later, they'd, they'd bring them back. And we, we were playing cat and mouse with people, and it was a great idea when we had cooperation from everybody, but-
At the end of the day, we, there is no parking.
Yeah.
There are no spaces.
I got it. So what I want to know is, is there support for one hundred?
Let me, let me make a motion, we'll find out if it-
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion that the twenty, the twenty percent applies, as is written here, that we change the requirement for bars and restaurants to, from sixty square fe, foot per automobile space to one hundred square foot per automobile space.
Restaurants and cafes?
Restaurants and cafes.
Not bars and lounges, are you differentiating it?
Restaurants and cafes.
Just restaurants and cafes?
Well, Rich said it was going to be a problem-
And you make a problem because you-
Well, if the council wanted to go that way, my suggestion would be that it, we distinguish that if they serve alcohol, they, they don't qualify for it. If they're treated as a bar, so that we don't squabble over, is it fifty-one percent a bar or a restaurant?
But every restaurant's going to sell alcohol?
Most do.
Yeah.
Only they're smart.
Well, and that's, I mean, that's the problem, I just don't want-
I wanted to just make his motion so it works, that's the point, he's, he's trying to formulate a-
Yeah, it's, it's, depends on the time of day that they're being used, what, what the use is going to be.
Is your motion for both categories or one?
It's for both categories. It's for both categories, it's for, it's for bars and restaurants.
Bars and lounges, restaurants and cafes?
Yes.
All the ones that are at 60 would go to 100. So, a second?
Second.
Second? Okay. Any other discussion?
Just that it, well, I don't wanna loosen the requirements on a mercantile redevelopment. That is a key property, and they traditionally have never provided enough parking, and I don't want to give them the ability to provide less parking.
Stephanie, the only property in the village that provides parking, nobody else provides it, the only one.
They sell it, they don't provide it.
Well, okay, that may be, we can get that back though.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I don't believe that we've adequately analyzed this situation, quite frankly. And, um, there's the whole effort to avoid intensification of the downtown area. I do want our bars and restaurants and other businesses to be successful, but, um, without further understanding of this issue, I'm gonna vote against it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Ryan, can you please do a rule call on this? Let me just repeat the motion, this is to increase the square footage from 60 to 100 for bars and lounges, restaurants and cafes, and the 20% will remain intact.
It was to increase to 100 restaurants and cafes, leave bars and lounges alone.
No, all, oh, both categories, he went to both categories.
I'm sorry.
That changed.
Okay?
I recognize, Rich, Rich's recommendation.
That was based on Rich's, I, the idea of enforcing it, so that was the thing.
Got it, okay, sorry, one more comment.
Go ahead.
So, another comment is, um, I like to do things incrementally. So, the idea that we change it to 20% expansion, we don't know the effect that's gonna have. And I'd like to see what that would be if we need more to give to the businesses so they can be more successful, so that they can be better at what they're trying to do, provide the atmosphere that we want downtown, then we could look at it at that point.
Okay, I'm gonna call the vote. Ryan, please.
So, do you want me to go with what I have here?
I hope what you have is we're gonna, we're voting to increase the square footage from 60 to 100 square feet on bars and lounges, restaurants and cafes, both categories.
Yes. Okay. Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertrand?
No.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harland?
No.
Mayor Bortoff?
No.
So, that motion fails three to two, Norton and Termini, positive. And, yeah, fails.
I, I would like to make one last comment, if I may.
Go ahead.
I, I think this discussion is, is definitely worthwhile. I, I don't feel that we adequately covered it, at least to my satisfaction. And I do have another question about how we decided the required parking, the I D T, I D E requirements, that is a, uh, I guess a U.S. standard, I'm, I'm guessing, that's used to figure out how many parking spaces are, are needed for each individual base, uh, for each individual, uh, business. And then we have something different in our code. So, maybe I'm missing something here, but it seems to me we should be aligned.
Councilmember Bertrand, um, I do wanna take an opportunity to correct myself. I, I think I previously stated that the village parking standard for restaurants and bars was more restrictive than I T E. I just looked at our 2008 parking study, I got it projected here on the screen, and they have one s- uh, space per 53 square feet, so I was incorrect.
We're, we're actually slightly more liberal now, which is a surprise, but, um, there it is.
So, we are aligned in, in our current code, more or less? That's what you're saying? Okay.
With I T E, if you look at some of the, uh, neighboring jurisdictions, I mean, they're kind of all over. Santa Cruz is higher, Monterey's, uh, slightly lower, Carmel is way higher.
Yeah, we, we are actually.
I do wanna correct the record.
We are actually allowed 20%, so in that way, it could be viewed as 72 feet. And the fact is, since we just voted and we discussed it, if you'd like to discuss it with Rich, I would say go do that, and we can bring it back and review it again. But for the sake of moving on, I'd like to move past that topic and.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I, I have one question for you, go ahead.
What, no, go ahead, I'll go on.
In the 20% figure, does that, is that preclude any expansion of the building?
Yes.
It does, is it stated in there?
Yes.
It is.
Yeah, it, it's only inter, within the internal building footprint, or for outside dining?
They could move into their neighbors.
They could, they could expand within the building. So, in the example of the mercantile, they can expand within the building. Another good example is, uh, the taco, uh, uh, next to the ice cream place, Bahia.
Aha, taco.
Bah, bah, yeah.
Realty place, yeah.
They could expand into the realty place that just opened. So, in that example, they could.
So, if it's on a property, they can expand outside dining?
Yes, if there's room for outside dining, they could, their 20% could go towards outside dining without requiring parking.
Got another question?
Just, no, just on, on another page.
Oh, next topic, okay, would you like to bring that up now?
And unless there's, um, other questions about the table 17.762, required onsite parking in other zoning districts. The, the only question that we, we never talk about is, is employee parking.
Yes.
And, you know, that's a big topic. And, you know, I, maybe we don't wanna, um, have a long discussion about this, maybe we wanna think about it and talk about it on Saturday. But, you know, we, we really need to address it. It's something that's been lacking, and we just haven't adequately planned for it, and I'm not sure.
Which sort of occupancy, Stephanie?
Pardon?
For which oc, which occupancy are we most concerned about?
Well, mostly large employers, that's, that's our problem. For the mom and pop stores, you know, I don't think they're quite as much of a problem, but when you have, um, an employer that has a lot of employees, parking's not well addressed, I don't think.
Like Shadowbrook?
A lot of, all of, all of them.
Doesn't Shadowbrook have its own private parking lot for employees? So, they do address it on that.
So, I, I think the main problem is when the, if I may, um, where it has an impact on the neighborhood, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, you see the people parking in the, in the jewel box and walking down to their jobs at Zeldas or to the other restaurants with their black aprons and their white shirts and, you know, their hair combed and all ready to go to work.
Cherry and Fennec.
Yeah, they park in River View Terrace, they park on Depot Hill, they park everywhere. You know, and maybe it's not, maybe it's not something we can solve. I know we've, we've talked about having, uh, low-cost parking permits for the owners to give to their employees, but I, I just, it's, we need to address it somehow, so that we can have some ideas about, that we can give to people about where they can park, where we're not gonna get complaints from all the neighborhoods saying we're getting, we're being heavily impacted by all those cars that are there. Maybe there's no solution, but we really haven't, haven't tackled that very well.
Have not.
I, I think it's a.
Ways to come down to, to success of businesses. Now, I'm gonna give you an example, and here's Gales. Gales employees park everywhere in those neighborhoods. They, they don't provide any parking except for their, for their, for their, for their, uh, their tent, their, uh, their customers. But, our, that neighborhood tolerates it, just because that's just the way it's been, and you wanna see that business successful. So, there's a trade-off somewhere where you have to give, there's gonna be some give and take in that and, and make it there, uh, Shadowbrook too.
But it would be wonderful to require somehow, or strongly encourage, that they have a parking demand program, or whatever it's called, these days, so that they do really try to encourage their employees to ride, walk, take the bus, carpool, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And, um, uh, so, I don't know how we could work that into our ordinances other than, you know, retroactively after we've already done these things. But, but I think there just needs to be more of an emphasis, because we are gonna start to get complaint, more complaints from people saying, you know, there's, there's no place to park because all the employees are parking there.
We have no ordinance specifying employee parking.
So, it, um, just as a reminder, the parking, when it says one per 300 or one per 240, this is based on statistical analysis, so, and there are so many other factors that come into play. And certain retail uses will have more employees than other retail uses. And, so these are the best averages, and I think when looking at this table, when a question comes up of, is this, you know, if, if they're looking at something that typically has more employees, the planning commission at that point can say, I'd like a parking study done, um, under standard F, because they have the ability to ask for a parking study, because they believe that the use will require more parking than our table outlines. Um, 'cause personal service establishments, anything like that, it really depends on the establishment. And the example of Gales is a great example to say that statistics don't always work when you have a one per 300. It's, it really is the success of the business and the exact type of business. So, I think F protects your concern, but these numbers should be taken into consideration when the, the number is set. It, it should have been set, taking into consideration that there would be employees at the site.
Well, maybe it's a separate topic, af- after we finish with all of this, that we can direct staff to try to come up with a voluntary, uh, program where they contact the employers and give them some options, and give them some ideas, and maybe we can give them an incentive or something. If, if they actually have a program and implement a program, we can give them a free business license, or waive the fees, or something like that to, just to give them an incentive to, to do that. Because when I was working down Salinas, my hospital did not have a, any kind of an incentive program, and they had people driving there from three counties, and not carpooling necessarily. And we had a horrible parking problem there. And so, I went to the board and, and asked them to please institute a parking plan to encourage people to carpool, and they did. And it worked, but then they dropped it a few years later, and they said they didn't really need to do it. And we had the same problem with people parking in the neighborhoods. So, I mean, you, yeah, we need to just work with the beast, large businesses, successful businesses, and have something to offer them, and have, really, really get on this, because we really haven't really had an active program. And I know we have small staff and not enough time to do everything, but I think that's a worthwhile project for, for an intern, maybe.
Mr. City Manager, would that be something we would put on a regular agenda to talk outside of the zoning ordinance? Is that something you think that falls under the zoning ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, you know, the, what I'm hearing this conversation about is, is not so much about a zoning code issue, it's about sort of more of a management of a few existing businesses.
Correct.
So, it sounds to me like it's probably something that we can bring back, uh, and talk about, whether we have incentive programs for T M D, uh, as Councilmember Harland talked about, programs. Cause I do think, really, what we're talking about is probably three or four specific businesses around the city that are doing very well, and are, you know, appreciated businesses, but do create still over impacts, and so.
Let's put that on a future agenda item.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's where we should deal with it, okay? Question?
Just, just, I, I completely agree with the city manager. But let's not forget, as city manager alluded to, uh, these are successful businesses. Uh, we like them in the city for a whole variety of reasons, and obviously, the people that frequent them like them. So, I don't wanna put any conditions on them that make it hard for them to do business.
No, but we, you know, we put no parking on a major street off Bay Avenue. That was pretty radical, and that was for the parking requirements in that neighborhood. And I don't want other neighborhoods to come into us and say, we want permit parking on our street too, cause you gave it to them, and, you know, you have this problem, let's just deal with, deal with the problem.
We've got it on, I, I, we need to move on on this, I, but I wanna go ahead and put that on a future agenda.
Obviously, I recognize that the neighborhood has some current concerns, I just wanna make sure we have a balanced approach, that's all.
Okay, next item?
Okay.
Does anybody else have any other items they did in between 76 dash 12? Is that where you were trying to take us to begin?
I was gonna take you to onsite parking alternatives.
I have a question on 10, 76-10.
Okay.
The, uh, under 3A, Capitola Theater site and Mercantile site, if driveway cuts, this is, um, the planning commission may approve exceptions to allow onsite parking in the M U V, the Village District Four. It says the Capitola Theater site, if driveway cuts are minimized to the extent possible, what does that mean? And possib, parking areas are located on the interior of the sites, what does that mean?
Okay, this comes directly from the front, the R L C P and its language, and the L C P that has consistently been carried through within our zoning code. So, what it means is that, um, they would be allowed to have onsite parking on those two sites as long as the driveway cuts are minimized to the extent possible.
What does that mean? I mean, aren't they setting widths of driveway, driveways?
Yeah, typically, there's a requirement of, uh, no more than 40% of the lot width. So, if they can make them even smaller, to the extent possible, it's very, very open.
50-foot, uh, lot width still gives you a 20-foot driveway. And there aren't, how many lots do we have less than 50 feet wide? There aren't many. That's a lot, that's a lot of latitude.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Harland, I, I think really with this point, the 38th Avenue project, the senior housing project that we saw come through and then morph into another project, the initial submittal for that actually had two distinct entryways, two distinct driveways into, um, the parking podium space, which really created basically the whole frontage of the property was almost all driveway. And during the course of your review, uh, in the planning commission's review of that, the direction was to consolidate that into a single entry point. So, I think that that's the same kind of point that this code, it sort of codifies that sort of previous direction, that, you know, nobody wants to see the front of a project, particularly in a commercial zone, village-type setting, just being one big driveway.
Right.
And, and what's the interior of, of the site, rather than the exterior of the site? You're talking about the front of the property, rather than the rear?
Yeah, I think it would, um, speak to having the buildings along the frontage of the site, and the, the parking would be in the middle of the site or behind the buildings, so that you keep the character of the village.
That's all.
Other questions?
On, uh, 14, are we there yet?
14, are we, are we getting ahead of you, Katie?
Now, you're getting ahead of me.
Okay.
Okay, so, you're next.
I'm gonna go back if I can.
Sure, Dennis, what, uh, number?
Um, we're on 76, uh, dash seven. We talked about, um, floor area, where a parking requirement is a ratio of a parking space to floor area, a ratio. And what it does is it down, down below, three-quarters of the way down, it goes, uh, pursuant to section 17.48, floor areas for garages and other parking facilities are generally not included in the calculation. Well, it seems like it either should, should be or shouldn't be, is that, you know, or generally, does that, what does that mean?
We're gonna check on that real quick.
Okay, and then, and then the one right below, it kinda goes back to what we just discussed, is that, that employees, when a parking requirement is stated, um, as a ratio of parking spaces to employees, the number of employees is based on the largest shift that occurs in a typical week. I guess if we have future large projects, that's the only time that would apply, because what exists now is what it is, right?
Right. But I mean, it's a good, it's a good criteria, don't, whatever, whatever the highest shift would be, would be what should, should be set.
It'd be real difficult with Gales, where they have high and low points with employees, so really.
I'm sure they have a high shift.
Yeah, they're, they're.
So, the daycare standard has, um, one per 400 square feet of floor area for daycare and one per employee. So, in that scenario, we'd look at what's the peak employees for a daycare.
So, it's a planning discretion, is that what it is?
Um, I think it's, it would be based on the largest shift that occurs in a typical week. So, if a daycare came in and we knew that Monday was their busiest day, they would have to tell us how many, we'd base it on that.
Okay, I understand.
I think we can just, uh, take out the word generally, I think that's a good comment, but, um, after the meeting, we will make, go back and make sure there wasn't a reason that we kinda qualified that language.
Katie, what's your next area?
Okay, so next, I'm gonna take you.
Before, just before, just, if I haven't said this to the public yet, since we're jumping around and moving, if anybody has a question anytime, just raise your hand, and then we'll bring you up to, uh, to talk on that topic, because we're just gonna be going from area to area, okay? Thank you. Go ahead, Katie.
Okay, so shared parking, this is, starts on page 76 dash 12. Shared parking was, there was a motion by the planning commission to bring this back and allow it within the mixed-use village. Um, there is a maximum reduction in the mixed-use neighborhood of 25%, and I wanted to bring this to your attention, because it would seem practical to also include this maximum reduction to the mixed-use village, as it is the one part of town that struggles with parking the most. So, currently, it's, it would seem odd not to have it on the village if we're requiring the mixed-use neighborhoods to have a maximum reduction for shared parking. So, with that, we'll have discussion?
Okay, any questions? Discussion?
I'm good.
Do we have consensus on that?
So, apply it to the mixed-use village?
Hold on, before we, before we get consensus, come on up.
Katie, could you, uh, I thought the shared parking, if we're talking about our differences in the establishments, is that what you're referring to in shared parking? Like, like my time? Is, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
I thought that was out the window. All of a sudden, it's appeared again?
Not in the village, we're talking about multi-use.
This, this item came back to the city council, um, the beginning of the month, as, to discuss parking. And one item, when we discussed parking, that the city council directed us to bring back to the planning commission, was for them to consider shared parking within the village, especially related to residential mixed use. So, planning commission reviewed this section E on page 76-12, and within your updated version, the, um, number five has been added on page 13 that says, "In the mixed-use village zoning district, the shared parking must be located onsite." And under eligibility for these parking reductions, on, under B, they, um, they allowed shared parking to be available within the mixed-use village. So, this is in the updated version that went out for this packet.
Item four specifically, you're reading.
So, yep, so number four, mixed-use neighborhood zoning district, there's a reduction of 25%. And my question this evening is, would you like that also to apply? percent, and my question this evening is, would you like that also to apply to the mixed-use village? Because now the mixed-use village is, this is applicable to the mixed-use village again, based on the Planning Commission direction.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
I apologize, I just, excuse me, I thought shared parking was, was finished, but I guess I was mistaken.
This went back to the Planning Commission on our, at the September nineteenth meeting, and during the September nineteenth meeting, the Planning Commission directed staff to allow shared parking within the village as long as there is onsite parking.
We're going, we're going to go and discuss this, but if you want to weigh, no, if you want to weigh in on your opinions on this, go ahead and do that now.
I think it's opening a can of worms. I don't know if you've seen the formula from the experts in San Jose firm that you hire, whoever hires. It's so subjective, I mean, it's just, to me, it's just a can of worms. We have a situation with wine time, I like wine time, but you know what, the neighbors across the street don't like it, or neighbors living around there don't like it. You're going to have, you're going to have to, whatever policies you adopt, you're going to also have to police those. And like I pointed out to the Planning Commission before, I walked in the parking lot of wine time, there, I think there's thirteen or fourteen parking signs, they're listing the businesses, not one has wine time on it. Several businesses listed on every sign, but not one with wine time. So if you're going to wine time in the evening like this, you drive in the back, "I can't park here, because wine time's not there." You're going to have to police that. Shared parking is a can of worms. Maybe it works in other areas, but in Capitol, I don't think it could work very well. And you start to think of the properties that can utilize shared parking. Newman's property can, okay? He could open up a restaurant there. You've got several properties that can, and certainly the Mercantile can. So I don't know, to me, it's just like you're stepping into a zone there that I know certain people have really wanted this and promoted it, but I, I, I think you better really open up your eyes and look at the downside of it.
Thanks, Bob.
Sure.
Any other comments on shared parking? Questions, comments?
Katie, can you explain the process when an applicant comes in for shared parking?
So if an applicant were to come in, we'll say for wine time? When they came in, they dropped off their application, they showed the use that they wanted, we took in additional monies for a parking study to be done, we hired a local consultant to do the study. They look at the mixed uses within the development and look at the peak hours of the different properties, so you've got, in that example, an office, there used to be a massage studio, and then a, and then it's wine time. And I think offices above were residential. So they look at the mix of uses, and then they calibrate that and decide how many parking spaces are really necessary on that site. And in that scenario, it was less than what we require by code, and they met that minimum. So they were allowed to have that onsite parking, but that is done by the, the city, it's not done independently by the applicant.
Everything upstairs from that business, in that business or downstairs is, is, is all daytime use, and they're not open at night, and. That, answer my question, okay. There, the only nighttime business that's open in that whole building?
Yes, there's a hair salon, and then also a real estate.
Okay.
Any other comments? I thought was a hand in the air, come on up.
But wine time's open during the day, on the weekends and in the summer. Shared parking does not work in Capitola, and you can say, "This is residential, so those people are all gone at work." No, they're, they're vacation rentals, people are there all day. There's really, I mean, there's almost no scenario where shared parking is going to work in the village. I mean, in reality. In, in, in that wine time building, the, the offices have to do with rentals, so they're open sometimes later, because they have people coming in later. It just, it does, doesn't work in a, in a beach type of situation where it's not a city, where everybody, you know, the downtown financial district in, in San Francisco is deserted on the weekends and, at, at night, but it doesn't work in Capitol Village.
Comments? Just, just a couple of things on that. I hate to disagree with you, Karen, but I do believe in that location, it does work, and I think it's a great compromise. The reason I say that is, is that the rental, businesses are there, JD does his artwork, and, and Beach House Rentals, which don't work on the weekends predominantly. Wine Time, if it is open on the weekends.
Beach House Rentals are open?
Not on Sundays. And, and, and on, and with regard to the, to the hair salon, I mean, it, it probably closes at seven or eight o'clock, and Wine Time's predominant crowd, or, or a rest, a place of that type, it doesn't matter, but it's predominant crowd is an evening crowd, and what, what compromises that parking place is the fact that the residents that live around there are parking that lot. But as far as, as the businesses, I, I think the idea of, of utilizing shared parking is something that can work. I mean, we, we have very few parking places, and I did speak with the owner about the signs, okay? The, the signs are so outdated, it has bucks on there and, and Red Poppy, that obviously are businesses that haven't been there for five years. So I mentioned him about upgrading those signs, which would probably help it a little bit, but I think that the habit is, is that the people that live in the apartment, especially next door, have made it their, their overflow parking lot, because it's hard to tell someone's in the parking lot. But as far as the concept of shared parking, I, I think that it, it's a good idea to have in the village. Good.
This meeting is not about shutting Wine Time down, it's a waste of time, nor the, the beauty shop. Let's get past that. I just don't think there should be shared parking in the village, but I think it has a place outside the village. So that is my motion.
Second.
That four dash, four point five be struck.
So on the question machine, where they're asking, "Add MUV," the answer would be no. Correct? Okay.
Just a couple of comments.
Sure.
Can I go back up to section D before we get down to that other one, just the off-site parking?
Can we close this one? Can we, I'd like to close this one out and then go back.
Okay, well, my big problem with this one is, under section E, shared parking is number, the new number one, Parking Demand Study Prepared, et cetera, paid for by the applicant, approved by the Planning Commission, that, they, it says, "The Planning Commission may allow shared parking if the parking demand study shows, paid for by the applicant, demonstrates that there will be no substantial conflicts between the land uses, principal hours of operation, and periods of peak parking demands." I can't, I can't believe that, I can't believe that a parking study could actually prove that, when we have so few parking lots in the village, and I, I don't understand this section either, because I haven't seen shared parking work. I'm sure haven't seen it, where, I think it's, this is maybe geared towards the Mercantile, but they're not sharing right now, and I don't think they're going to share in the future.
We're striking, that we're, motioning to strike the village, I think, along the Forty-first Avenue corridor, if mixed use should take place, this makes sense, but the village, I can't see where it makes sense anywhere.
The only motion on is to, to the question of add MUV, that would be no, that's your motion.
And so you'll have to change that language for number four?
Is there a second?
I seconded it.
Oh, you seconded, okay, good, thanks.
Yeah, so we have to change that number four there.
They'll adjust that, once, once we make the vote, they'll, they'll amend it.
Can I ask for clarification? Originally, this was, would you like to add the twenty-five percent requirement to the MUV? What I'm hearing now is a motion to remove mixed, shared parking, the applicant, the changes that the Planning Commission just made to bring it back into this section, to remove it.
Remove it. Okay, so that's your motion.
Entirely.
And you, you support that? Okay, good. Any other discussion on that?
I, I truly would like to have heard the discussion by the Planning Commission on this issue, and they brought it back to us twice. You know, I, I want to know the reasoning why they did that. You know, we're going to see this again.
Planning Commission's not recommending removing it.
No, they're not, they're.
Well, they, they actually did. Their recommendation to you was not have shared parking in the village.
What'd they get?
And by vote, you asked staff to go back to them and ask them to reconsider. They said, "Fine, as long as the property has parking on site, we can live with it."
We've reconsidered the reconsideration.
Thank you for the clarifying that.
It only involves one property, two properties.
I, I just want to be clear, we're voting out, so the Planning Commission did kick back to remove it, the motion is to remove it, the second is to remove it. Any other discussion? You already spoken on this, about, I already spoke on this, you, oh, you already spoke, we're going to vote, okay? Thank you. So roll call vote on removing shared parking in the village.
Okay. Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Councilmember British.
Aye.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harland?
Aye.
And Mayor Batorf?
Aye.
So the motion carries unanimously, shared parking is removed in the village. Okay, Stephanie, do you have something else?
I have a question.
Something higher on the page.
Yeah, I just had a question on section D, right above that section, on off-site parking for multifamily housing and non-residential uses, in what zoning district?
In D?
Yeah, the new D, off-site parking, number one.
That would apply under eligibility, it just, it would not apply to the village.
Is that in a chart that I'm not seeing?
It would apply everywhere except for the village. So under, so this, this whole section for onsite parking alternatives, under B eligibility, it talks about, it's eligible for all sections except for the village, so all of these would apply.
Oh, outside, okay, outside of the mixed-use village zoning district.
And so now, under this section, the two that apply in the village are valet parking and the in-lu parking, and we've just removed the shared parking.
Well, okay, my question is, in, if we have another, if we have a vacant space somewhere, and someone wants to, to build a multifamily housing development, why would we allow them to park off-site? I, I, that doesn't make any sense to me. Same thing with non-residential use, that means it's a commercial use, it's an office, why would we allow them to park off-site rather than providing parking? I can't imagine when we would do that and why we would do that. It seems that our parking problems are, are tremendous already, and so why would we let somebody park off-site? Provide parking, I mean, I don't even know if they could do it.
Only if the Planning Commission approves it.
I, you know, I, where would, where would we see this happening successfully?
It's already happened at the Shadowbrook. They have a vacant lot that's down the street, and they use that as part of their parking.
That's, they own that, that's across the street.
It doesn't matter if they own it or not, I'm just, it's the same thing with this. If they, if you had a development and you had, if you had a lot across the street.
We're just not closing the door here, if they can provide something that's suitable, that's what they're saying. But it would go through much scrutiny before it was approved. But if they can provide something that solves the, the problem, then they'd allow it.
Well, I, I'd almost consider that, the Shadowbrook parking onsite, I mean, it's right across the street, so.
No, no, I'm talking, this is one down the street, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it was right down on a major, major intersection, there were Forty-Ninth Hits, Capitol Road.
Yeah, but that's still across the street. I consider that across the street. It's like three houses down.
That's what, that's what a development like this would probably do.
That's what onsite, that's considered onsite.
Where in Capitol, could you build something and then provide off-site parking somewhere? I don't see that ever happening here, or fi, or provide multifamily housing.
There's no reason to close the door to it if it's a concept.
Whatever circumstance we now allow for it to happen.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, I, the Shadowbrook is a good example, I think the Capitol Mall is another great example, across the street from the mall, the development there with the McDonald's, those are all separate parcels, and they all have off-site parking. So I think those are the, probably the prime examples that come to mind to me, where there's separate ownerships, and they're all tied up with easements, reciprocal easements, to allow off-site parking.
When I think of off-site, I mean like blocks and blocks away, not right on, right, like right within walking distance of, of the business, that's what I, that's what I would see.
I don't, Stephanie, I don't think they would allow something like that.
Well, that is what, that's what I read when I, when I foresee this.
But why close the door if, if there's, if a creative way to do it, not park every car on the site, I think that's a great idea.
D two requires it to be a, quote, reasonable distance.
Yeah.
We didn't put a specific number to it, because it can vary so much from place to place, but the Planning Commission would have to consider proximity.
I think there's a lot to scrutiny on this by, by many people.
I mean, the only place that it's working somewhat successfully is the Monarch Cove, because they finally comply, and they're, they're renting space from the church, and they have a shuttle bus or something that comes in, you know, that, that works there, okay, but.
Schoolyard, not the church.
Yeah.
Let me see, is there anyone else who would like to remove this? I think it's okay, Stephanie.
Okay. I have a question on the next page.
Sure.
Are we there yet?
We can.
We're not there yet.
Valet parking?
She, are you ready to move to thirteen?
What page? Go by page number, so.
I am, seventy-six, thirteen.
Oh, thank you.
I have an issue.
Well, I'm trying to not get ahead of Katie, are you on page thirteen?
Yes, seven.
Well, I'm up to valet parking.
Three dash thirteen, valet parking.
Okay, can we all be on valet parking? Okay, listen. Good.
Under valet parking, the Planning Commission may allow up to twenty-five percent of the required onsite parking spaces to be off-site valet spaces, and a question was raised as whether or not twenty-five percent is too limiting. So in the example of a hotel, if, if the maximum of valet parking would be twenty-five percent, then seventy-five percent would need to be onsite.
And did you say this section applies to the village?
And this applies to the village, we could, one way to remedy this is if you wanted to have a higher standard for a hotel, we could add a higher standard specifically to a hotel, or we could change the standard altogether, so it'd be applicable to anyone with valet parking, such as a restaurant, but.
I'm confused, Katie, the twenty-five percent applies that, that's all they're required to have, or that you must provide that much?
It's a maximum.
Maximum.
So when they put together their plan, there's a maximum of twenty-five percent.
If you're talking about Capitol Theater site, it should be ninety-five percent valet parking.
Well, that's what we're talking about.
That's what's up.
That's why we're discussing this. So I think we're going to have discussion about the twenty-five percent number, so.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to make a motion to go a hundred percent.
Good.
Is that for a hotel or?
Hotel.
Any business in the city?
Hotel.
I think we should separate it. Hotel or any hotel? Just for the hotels, yeah, yeah, well, Capitol Hotel, forget it, but I'm definitely thinking of Swenson, yeah.
If we're talking about one single parcel?
Yep.
Are we safe in spot zoning that for specific requirements? I think we're on solid ground?
Yeah, we've discussed this with City Attorney, and they felt that it wouldn't be spot zoning necessarily to treat that property differently than others.
It's a different can of worms, I mean, it has such an impact on our village that we have to.
Any other comments? I'm thinking that a hundred percent might be a little aggressive, I know we have a in-lu program that has set aside forty-six spaces for a hotel's expansion.
Do you want them to build you a parking garage?
Yep.
That's what you want to do, right?
Right.
I'm just saying, I did, might be a little, a hundred percent might be a little aggressive.
I think I would recommend that if you want to apply it simply to a village hotel, the old theater site, that we write something in there saying that that restriction does not apply to that property.
But that number would be determined by?
By the parking study.
Planning Commission or?
Yeah. We already have language in there that says that any future hotel project that has to produce a parking study, and I think that's a place that we could easily write in there that.
So we just made that parcel exempt from this?
Excluded from this.
Excluded. Would that be sufficient to everybody's concerns?
No, no, it isn't.
Oh. Would that be sufficient?
And we have to expand the language, because we have to give them the ability to receive deliveries, we have to give them the ability to receive cars there and valet them, we have to give them the ability to have, perhaps, if we really want to solve the problem, that we have to, to speak to their employee parking as well.
Yes.
So, this is a, this is a big chunk we're gonna bite off.
I agree with you, Mike, but what we're talking about is, is visitors serving and the people who come to stay are not, not services or drop-off.
Then we need to have it, we need the wording that be crafted by staff to be brought back to us regarding that one parcel.
I, I agree with Mike, that's one reason why I asked a question earlier about the parking study. So, the parking study will take into account, you know, a lot of issues, including staff, that's my understanding. This was clarified this afternoon, so...
So, so would we agree that this section is intact as is, excluding the hotel, which staff is gonna draw up some specific language that we can review and approve?
As long as staff knows our intent is to have all the guest visitors be valeted off the site.
I think you have to have ADA parking on the site, don't you?
Well, why don't we figure that out when the staff comes back?
Well, I think, I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna direct, I, this, we're okay with the language here excluding the hotel, staff's gonna bring us back language that we're gonna review, including ADA considerations and whatever.
You know, ADA consideration, ADA's there, I don't think we have to write anything in the code to say that we need to comply with ADA. I think it's a pretty simple change, if it's just the village hotel, I think we say that a twenty-five percent limit does not apply to, to the village hotel, former theaters.
Is there an objection to that?
A misunderstanding that I, I oppose.
Is this gonna come deck rich in the zoning ordinance, or is this coming in back afterwards?
It's not coming back, he's trying to make the change right now. He's trying to just drop the twenty-five percent.
You will see it again, you know, we'll go back to the planning commission after the city council is done, and then you'll get final crack at the last.
I, I like the simple, the simple one, just excluding the hotel at this point.
So, a se, a separate section dealing with the hotel that just drops the twenty-five percent?
Right.
Is that what you're suggesting?
I don't think it'll be a separate section, I think it would be right in that same...
Or, I mean, I'm sorry, a separate paragraph, number, whatever it is, yeah.
I moved that the valet parking for the hotel is, at this point, a hundred percent, right? It's dropped from the twen, the twenty-five percent is dropped requirement.
We're just not dropping a number, we're not putting in a number, we're just dropping a number.
You're not putting a number in, yes.
Unless you wanted to make it a hundred percent.
I still wanna make it a hundred percent, but I would like to see a study also.
Do you want, do you want, you know, take a vote for a hundred percent, or do you wanna just drop the twenty-five percent?
Drop, I thought we were...
Mr. Mayor, my recommendation would be, it sounds like the conversation is to just drop the twenty-five percent ceiling for the hotel site. I think to, to try to, at this point, when we don't have a project and, I think, you don't wanna get ahead of yourselves, would be my recommendation.
I was trying to have that conversation, I thought we were all in agreement of just dropping the number, and I just wanted to push the question.
But part of that motion is to, is for the staff to bring back language regarding valet parking for the hotel site.
Yes.
It's only for fifteen years from now.
Right. But I don't wanna broadcast that we're gonna be wiggle down to fifty percent or twenty-four percent.
No number, we just dropped the number, there is no number that exists, is my understanding, you're gonna bring that back. And that'll be, planning to review it, then we'll get the final shot at it.
Okay. That's our intent.
Okay. Good, we can move on.
I, I'm gonna go backwards here, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Seventy-six dash eleven, and I have a question for Michael. Are we to the point now where we should be installing electric charging stations in every news, single-family residence?
No.
No? How about pre-wiring?
No.
Okay, answer my question.
We don't, we don't know yet, not for the residents, and I believe the residents will install them when they buy an electric vehicle.
That's correct.
It'll happen.
Okay.
By necessity. Go ahead.
I, I did have a comment that I shared with Katie this afternoon, so I think we have to be prepared for the fact that are gonna be a lot more electric cars coming into our city, and that we should be proactive in this require, in this particular case. I, I don't know, you know, what the adoption curve is gonna be, but if we have electric stations in this town, they will come here, if we don't have electric stations in this town...
We don't, you don't have any changes to this, though, it's just a comment?
I'm just not sure what to put here, you know, in terms of requirements, that's, that's my problem.
We don't know yet, and right now there's, and the only reason that I said no to yours, Dennis, is different vehicles require different level chargers, depending on the desire of the people, so it would be hard for us to get really specific, there's level one, two, and three, there's a DC charger for the Tesla, there's...
You would say we're adequate for now?
I think we're adequate for now, and I think it will be more, we're gonna see this be driven more by the desire by the property owner to account for the needs and desires of their customers than anything else.
I would also add that we've, we've started work on updating our green building ordinance, which will be done outside the zoning code, we're gonna suggest that we move it into chapter fifteen, the building, chapter municipal code. And this is gonna be one of the many things we look at, I think the way we would propose it is there would be a voluntary point program where if you do install your electric vehicle charging station, you achieve, you know, some level of compliance with the green building ordinance. So, it's something we're looking at, just not right here.
Just on electric vehicles, if we have the opportunity to put more around town, that would be great, if we can get any other grant funds or squeeze the money out of our budget to do that.
On public property, for sure.
Yeah, that would be great. There's one at Walgreens in SoCal and Santa Cruz, and I'm wondering why there's one there because only the employees are there all day for hours and hours and hours, and they probably don't have electric vehicles, maybe the pharmacist, but...
The chargers, the chargers that we installed at, at Whole Foods, and it's part of the Whole Foods corporate program, we did it in Watsonville, we did it in, in Santa Cruz, we can't do it in Capitol because the property owner won't agree with Whole Foods, that's a whole different story. It charges the, the Tesla from zero to a hundred percent in twenty minutes.
Yeah.
That's the average visit to a grocery store, there's a reason why Whole Foods is doing that.
Absolutely, more business.
I mean, I think they're, they're, they're very important, but they had, the placement is very important, too, so that they're at a place where people are gonna be spending some time to charge their car.
Well, the average visit to a grocery store is twenty minutes, and Whole Foods would really like to see everyone who owns a Tesla visit them because they don't care that tomatoes cost five ninety-nine.
There we go.
Did I say that out loud?
You did. Can we, where, where are we, I, I have us at F, low demand, transportation demand, or are you farther ahead?
Yes, the next request for discussion was transit center credit, which is on the following page, so...
So, we're on seventy-six?
Seventy-six dash fourteen.
Seventy-six, fourteen, we're all there.
When the planning commission reviewed the parking chapter, they requested that the transit center credit be removed, and this was a, the planning commission may reduce the number of required parking spaces by up to ten percent for non-residential or multifamily development projects within four hundred feet of a regional transit center. So, specifically, this would apply to the majority of the mall, because that is where our transit center is, and it would be for that whole property, and it would allow a ten percent reduction in parking because there's a transit center on site. And that is a typical incentive you would see these days in a zoning code update, but the planning commission asked for it to be removed for multiple reasons, one being that the, the way in which the transit center currently is set up with their routing system, they didn't think was efficient enough to be utilized, so they didn't think it would really result in a ten percent decrease in parking, that most people would drive to the mall regardless, and I'll look to community development director for assistance on the other items.
The other reasoning was the draft language, I believe, set a four-hundred-foot radius where this provision could be used, which is basically the mall site, they shifted it over to Claire's, maybe to capture some of Brown's Ranch. If the mall ever redevelops, it's gonna come on with probably a big project, specific plan, something else that works outside the zoning code. So, it's probably a meaningless standard in their opinion, I think that's probably right.
You would support that this wouldn't affect any future plans that might happen with the mall, would not, would come under its own scrutiny by another plan?
That's my, that's my expectation.
Any problems with that?
I, I don't, I don't see any reason to take it out, though, just because of the fact that if you gave a incentive for, for businesses to encourage transit, transit ridership, such as Cabrillo does by giving passes away, anything that gives that kind of incentive, and if you, if I, if you were a developer looking at this saying, I could reduce my parking demands by thirty percent if I, or I, if I can give away bus passes, doesn't that make sense? If the mall's gonna be designed, we're not, we're not in one place at times, it's gonna be designed someday. So, this is a fifteen, twenty-year plan we're dealing with here, we should leave a window open for that to be incentive. If they changed it and asked for something else in the criteria, dude, I don't know why we would take it out, I, I think it's a incentive.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I brought this up for discussion, so, basically, my, my mind was pretty much as you are, Dennis. I think it's a good policy to have this in our zoning code because we don't know what other kind of planning developments are gonna come forward, and to be able to promote things near transit quarters and then give them a benefit for that, I think is important.
Mike?
Stephanie? I, I, I think it's a good idea to take it out, because as Rich said, they're gonna come in with a whole new big project that will include everything, and parking is one of them. And at that point, we will take a real hard look at their parking needs and their parking demand and so forth, and just because there's a transit center there, I don't wanna give them less parking if they really need it. So, I think we should leave it, leave it out.
I would, I would agree with Dennis and Jacque to le, to leave it in there, I think we should be offering incentives, so I, and I don't think that it, I would wanna set the, the tone that we are, we are interested in offering incentives for, for the right project that comes in there, so I, I wouldn't wanna have anything restrictive, and we may even be less restrictive based on the parking, and I'm sure that if a project does come in, there would be a parking analysis done and everything else, so I don't, I don't see the reason for taking it out. Mike, you wanna weigh in on that, or no opinion, or?
Okay, with it, in or out, I think that it's gonna come with the project. Anything of substantial size, I, I'm actually leaning a little bit towards taking it out, only because we would have seen the thirty-eight project, I mean, skinny parking if we did this.
Okay, anybody else? We've had multiple opinions, so I don't think I have a consensus, so Ryan, was there, Dennis, do you have a motion, was yours a motion on this?
Yeah, you, you, I would like to change part of it, though, I don't, the four-hundred-foot radius doesn't make sense to me, it's in there.
So, what is your...
What would you recommend we change it to if we did, Rich?
I guess it depends how far away from the transit station you wanna give parking credits to, and then, you know, I'd probably have to measure out, you know, if you wanted to extend across the street to the Whole Foods Plaza, if you wanted to go down to King's Plaza, I don't know.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking within, within the confines of the, what we call Capitol Mall. So, it'd be Claire's, Forty-first, Capitol Avenue.
So, if you just wanna take the mall lot in, we could, we could define that, you know, the...
Within the confines of the mall property?
Yeah, as, as bound by Forty-first Avenue, Capitol Road, and Claire's.
Can we do that as, as a geographic definition?
Okay.
Sure.
Just one point...
Did you still second that?
I will second that, just a point to consider, might change it. So, we don't know if the transit center's gonna change the location, so we've tried to make that happen before with the redesign, could include Brown Ranch, so to just be the confines, I'm not sure that would work in that case, that's all.
Now, the proposed transit center change was still, the one recommended by Metro was still in the confines.
I thought you were defining it, the, to the transit.
It was in the confines of the mall. So...
Second?
Second. Dennis' motion, Ryan, you call for the vote, please?
Councilmember Termini?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Aye.
Councilmember Harland?
No.
Councilmember Norton?
Aye.
Mayor Bator?
Aye, that motion carries four to one with Harland dissenting, so we are on to, that was back, so Katie, I guess I wanna go forward again, right, to...
Yes, next, compact spaces on page fifteen.
Are we, is this these in-lu parking? Are we talking about the in-lu parking that we discussed and was passed with regard to transient occupancy in the village? It, it just says non-residential, doesn't say enough for me. Even though I voted against it, it passed, we were very specific that it wasn't just non-residential, it was transient occupancy, is the only, they're the only concerns that are allowed to access the in-lu parking. Am I, am I thinking about the right thing, the ten spaces?
Yes, so we have not updated this based on the direction of the city council at this point.
Sorry.
I have to discuss later. I, I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna try to be very general in this section, just to recognize that the city council has an in-lu policy, so that if at some time that policy changes, we're not doing code amendments and LCP amendments.
Well, the problem with that is, we were pretty darn specific, so being general in this part doesn't work for me, everywhere else it does, but it, and even though, again, even though I didn't vote in favor, what was passed was visitors serving, transient occupancy only, or allow in-in-lu parking program. Is that, did I recall that correctly?
It's correct.
But this one should be pretty specific, at least...
So, there's, there's probably two ways to go about it, one way would be to put exactly the specifications that you'd like in, in the ordinance. The downside of that is if we ever change it, we'll have to amend the zoning code and we'll have to get an LCP amendment through the coastal commission, it lives in a policy, we have a little more wiggle room. So, those are the two ways we could do it, it's really a call by the council.
What language don't you like in here, Mike? What, what says non-residential, it's, that's not what was the intent of the motion, the intent of the motion by the council was visitors serving transient occupancy only to participate in that whole ten space.
Is that too specific? It is consistent with our... Well, short of direction from the council to specify exactly what the policy is in the zoning code, I would suggest that we write something that in-lu parking may be utilized consistent with city council policy, I one, or whatever the number is, something very simple. It may have a little more than that, but...
Well, I'm, 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 I'm all for the ease of what you wanna recommend, as long as it's clear that what we did approve was only for hotels and overnight visitors accommodations, that was it, so, however that is included...
We can be as specific or as general as the council would like.
Yeah, I, I can understand the concern, I, I, I'm not, I'm trying to go along with what you're suggesting, but I mean, I think we know what we, I think we know what we passed, what we approved, and that was for, specifically for a hotel or, or bed and breakfast or some overnight visitor accommodations. Is that, is that clear enough, or is that enough confidence?
To relax or to be more specific as, it's like the, what we passed, that's what I'm hoping to say.
That's council's desire?
The council's desire is that it's very clear, it was, it was a very highly discussed topic, and I think the more ambiguity or wiggle room you have puts us in a bad situation, so I, I think I'd rather have it be more specific. The city manager, I'll take input if you have that look like you wanna add something.
So, to sort of be, be clear, the policy exists as, as it was drafted and adopted by the council at the last meeting, you know, nothing you're doing here is gonna change that policy, so the question just comes, is the community development director said, is, is do you reiterate that policy in your code? And by way of background, you know, one of the experiences I've had with the city is that our parking meter rates exist within our LCP, which means we don't have control over them, and so to make a change, adjust for inflation to our parking meter rates, every time we've tried to do that, it's been a major reveal, takes a year, sometimes comes back with new conditions from the coastal commission, so my own experience with the city has been that, you know, keeping it a little bit more general in the code and then having a specific policy probably works best in the long run, but obviously, as the community development director said, it's, it's, you know, purely a policy call, but I just wanted to remind everybody of the challenges sometimes of amending the LCP.
Just, just, you know, I, since I was on the, the positive side of that vote, I think when, when I voted for that, I was originally, those spaces were set aside specifically for a large-scale hotel with valet, and we amended it to accomplish something else, so I would, I would still want to make it more specific, I wouldn't care if we had to come back and amend it, I, I think that the message was sent that, look, we were gonna make this exception to allow for overnight parking at a hotel, and I wouldn't wanna have wiggle room, so that would be my...
I didn't, I didn't necessarily think it was gonna be part of our zoning ordinance. I, I thought that through resolution that we made, we could, we could just keep, keep it there, and it's just, we just apply it through planning, planning, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be embedded in the zoning ordinance, so...
I beg the question, why is in-lu even in our zoning code?
Well, I, I think we do wanna recognize it, I think it's good practice for transparency, and this is gonna be submitted to the coastal commission, and then we're gonna get an official buy-off or not with that program, they verbally told us they think it's fine, but, you know, staff changes.
I, I don't know that we wanna send this part to the coastal commission, I don't know.
So, if we didn't have it, how would that work out, I mean, if we didn't have it, how do you take the coastal commission, knowing that we have an in-lu, in-lu program?
If we didn't have it?
If we didn't have this, sir?
I, I don't think they would have an issue with it, but, you know, the concern would be that maybe five years later, they have different staff, they, and they don't agree with the current staff, and they say, ah, you never had that certified, we don't agree, we don't like this in-lu program. The city's position has been, under the LCP right now, to intensify or build new development The city's position has been, under the LCP right now, to intensify or build new development in the village, you have to provide off-site parking within walking distance of the village. So from our minds, the in-lu program is exactly that. It's providing parking over here, walking distance outside the village. But another coastal person could look at it very differently. So that's the reason we want to embed it, at least to some extent.
But we could have the in-lu parking program in there and not discuss the fifty-four spaces. Why do we have to bring that into play?
Yeah, I mean, there's different levels of specificity. We could simply say that it's only allowed for hotels, and if that's adequate or like that, we could get into, you know, the number of spaces for a large hotel and a small hotel, and what happens with the monies and how the calculations figured out. I don't know if we need to go into all that level of detail, but some of that direction would be good for us.
Can we talk about an in-lu program and not discuss the fifty-four spaces? Can we just leave that?
Yeah, certainly.
That may be the best policy for us.
Hotels?
Yeah.
Like visitor-serving, transient occupancy.
What we agreed to at the last... Are we clear?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Go ahead.
Just so I'm clear, is the language going to be that within the MU zoning district, onsite parking requirements for hotels may be satisfied through the payment of an in-lu parking fee program established by the city council? Is that the language?
Yes, it would be hotels, or, I mean, what if it was a bed and breakfast? Would that mean expansion on that?
Motel?
Overnight, it's for overnight visitors, okay?
Right, it's for visitor-serving, transient occupancy.
Whatever language you want to use there that encompasses those two.
Rental bedroom.
And that sentence to provide an equivalent number of parking spaces in a municipal parking lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Next, where are we? I don't know, Katie's going to tell us.
And next, we are going to move on to compact parking spaces. Vice Mayor Harland had brought this up, a concern about too many compact parking spaces within the current allowance. So your standard parking space is nine by eighteen feet. A compact parking space can be reduced to eight by sixteen feet, and there was concern that there are possibly too many compact spaces at thirty percent.
Well, when I looked at it again, I thought thirty percent doesn't sound too bad. The problem is that big cars are parking in those spaces. So I don't know how we enforce that other than double white lines, but then they'll still park there. But at least that gives the illusion of it, of you having some area to open your door to get in and out of.
I drive a Mini Cooper, I don't really care.
I know.
You're trying to affect human nature, Stephanie.
I park sideways.
I know, so, I don't know.
I'm going to cram that SUV in that spot if it's the only one left in the lot.
I guess if, maybe there's sign better that says compact. I mean, people don't read the signs anyway. But maybe if we have a better signage or something to help that, but...
I think the good news is cars are getting smaller.
Yeah, until you see all the trucks on the road right now. New pickup trucks.
Yeah, yeah, actually, the sales of big cars is...
In fact, we need some spaces about thirty feet long, about ten feet wide, accommodate a new Ford pickup. You know, maybe there is a way, Stephanie, that we can spot the blue dot spots. People get that in their head that that's a place for compacts. But I think that we've been doing this pattern for a while here, and it's not terrible. It's not the perfect, but it's not terrible. And we can't cover the whole world with parking lots, too, so somewhere we need to...
Stephanie brought up the double line thing, and I think there's some wisdom in that, you know? Because it will force people to get in the center of their spot and not go over to the left or to the right, which I do when I'm in a hurry, I have to admit. But it will get that, you know, well-aligned car...
It helps.
But you're increasing your parking lot by about one quarter by doing that?
No.
Not that much.
Your space, you have your spacing more farther between cars.
I thought the space is still the same, but you have the double line.
The space, the width is, but you're adding another foot on each side. So you're adding another foot, so the spaces become not eight-feet spaces, they're nine-foot spaces when you add them out.
Are we okay with leaving this like it is?
I'm okay with it.
Sounds good.
Okay.
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 I would just like to require some other signage in large parking lots or signs on the... I don't like a lot of signs in the asphalt, but just some other way to try to educate people to park your compact car in those spaces. Don't park your big car in there, because it's extremely difficult to get in and out sometimes. I don't know how we do that.
Wait, just a question for staff, and I'm going to bring up this question. Do we, are all of our parking places that are compact or substandard, are they... I seem to recall that some of the spaces in the village were marked, do we mark? Do we identify our substandard parking places by any mechanism? Painting or anything else?
Contract.
I think, well, that's what I'm trying to recall.
I'm trying to think, within the village, I can't think of a public designated compact space within the village. Within our lots back here, I... There may be one or two that are designated. I think primarily this is on private property.
Okay, Bob, you got a question?
I just have a couple observations this past couple weeks. Yeah, the trucks are getting bigger, more monster, higher, thicker, everything. But why not reward people who buy small cars? I mean, you could fit two Mini Coopers on a parallel parking lot right out on the street here. You could fit two Mini Coopers, basically, in one standard parking lot. So maybe a trial thing of just showing, you know, maybe twenty spaces coming down Capitol Avenue for, or maybe ten spaces for, cars less than ten feet in length. The width is not an issue on parallel parking, just an idea.
I think more for smart cars that would work than Mini Coopers. You like to think you're small, but...
I'm not that smart.
More suited for smart cars, I think. So, okay?
What page were we on?
The last item I have for discussion in the parking section is on page eighteen. And this is when we're discussing screening, when you have commercial next to residential. Currently, parking lots within ten feet of a residential zoning district shall be screened by a six-foot masonry wall. There was a question that came up of whether or not we should elevate this to eight feet to create more of a barrier between residential and commercial.
I think that would do just as much to, not irritate, but it's more, it's just as imposing to put an eight-foot CMU wall at someone's property line, facing someone's backyard. It just doesn't feel good.
Where did that suggestion come from? Is that from the planning commission?
No, this is from Councilmember Bertrand.
Oh, okay.
I brought this up. So if your residence next to like a garage or a drive-in for something, or... To me, that would give some privacy, so that's the reason why I suggested it.
We actually had that case over at New Leaf when some new residences went in right behind their trucks, and they...
It was truck delivery.
And they, we put a masonry wall there, kind of a high one there.
It was a six-foot wall, it wasn't an eight-foot wall. Eight-foot is like...
Yeah.
It's too high?
Soleil daddy wall.
Well, you know, planning commission can always condition that, I think, see it's a block. Well, we had the problem with the headlights coming in at McDonald's there, making the turn. So what we did, we made a mistake there. What we did is we conditioned they do a block wall right there, but the rest of the residences are still with the old wood wall, goes all the way around.
Can we put the word "may" in there? What if we put the word "may" instead of "shall"? Which means they could if they wanted.
They can always do that, putting it in.
They could always do, even if we didn't change it, they could raise the date?
I think it would be good to write it in, because right now it's six-foot with a two-foot lattice top or something. So if we want to allow it...
Just change the word to "may," would there be support for that?
Sure.
May for a masonry wall?
Yeah, a "may" at their discretion.
I haven't heard anybody speak against a masonry wall if it's six-foot, is that eight-foot?
No, six-foot's fine, I was speaking against an eight-foot masonry wall.
Okay, and we could just say the six-foot, and it's a discretionary of the planning commission if they want to make it eight there, right?
Because under some circumstances, they may want that.
Just changing the word to "may."
I would suggest that we keep "shall" be screened by a six-foot masonry wall with the option that they may go up to eight feet.
Even better.
So I'll move.
Any consensus with that?
Sure, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do want to just bring us back to the Fairfield, and you'll recall that one of the residential, single-family residences adjacent to it had some issues with the development, and they ultimately were satisfied with, I think it was like a twelve-foot masonry wall was what they wanted. Any council members who were there recall that. But that was what they negotiated with the single-family homeowner. So my suggestion maybe is put the six at a minimum, and...
I remember that.
Yeah, we joked around the staff calling it El Capitan, but...
So how would we word that, Katie?
It was ultimately what the single-family homeowner requested.
Maybe higher.
Maybe higher?
I think it might be something that's minimum six-foot, high, and may exceed that height with planning commission approval, which is kind of our fence and wall standards right now.
Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
I have questions on seventy-six dash seventeen.
We're okay with that one, Katie, you got that? So your question, Mike, is what?
Seventy-six dash seventeen, if it's the one I have.
Seventy-six seventeen, we're going back, go ahead.
Surfacing, how do we want, this is our opportunity to require permeable paving.
That's my question.
Do we want, while I would like to see it as a requirement, I understand the vagaries of it. It's not always perfect technology, but I think that we should put something in there about it, some language about it being encouraged.
Let's change it from permitted to preferred.
Another opportunity we'll have to address this is the green building ordinance. It's another thing that we at least have drafted in as a measure that somebody could get points for if they were incorporated into a commercial or multifamily project.
But remember that we're requiring asphalt concrete or any other all-weather surface, and we're not even paying lip service, number one, to permeable. You know, subject to the approval of the public works director.
Could we change permitted to encouraged?
Encouraged, yeah.
Would we change permitted to...
Preferred, how about preferred?
Preferred, okay, how about changing that, permitted to preferred? Are we okay?
Sure.
And two, any changes you want to do in one?
No.
Okay.
Then I'd like to go down to parking lifts. Do we want to require an attendant for mechanical lifting parking?
Yes.
There's no language in there about that, but we know that we've heard about it. It hasn't come to us yet, but I think it should be required.
Would the person have to stay down there all the time?
Yeah, to help people get their cars in and out.
What if you had four spaces? Doesn't make it feasible, or even eight?
No lift for you.
Just to point out, my experience with parking lifts is that there are a lot of approaches to that where there does not need to be an attendant, that it's an automated system.
For how many units, and what kind of development was it? Anything similar to what we have?
I'm thinking about it within a structure and maybe about ten or twelve spaces that are accommodated through...
Commercial or residential or mixed use?
The upper bunk and lower bunk have to be the same person. Otherwise, if it's not an attendant, you couldn't get your car from the top if someone else is parked in the bottom.
Well, apartments will require two parking spaces, so that would work in that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there are automated lifts that are actually self-operated. They're very expensive, but they'll actually move up and down, and so you can get your car...
Even if somebody's under you?
Yeah, do a pit underneath.
How do they do that?
Question.
The pit, a pit underneath. I've seen them in the Bay Area in a few examples.
Okay, I stand corrected.
But I've never seen that for commercial use, only for residential.
Yeah.
I think as soon as you get into a commercial use, the attendant question becomes, I mean, it really becomes a valet-type problem.
I can move along unless there's...
I would say let's move along, and wait till, I'd say way too representative of this problem, we could analyze it then.
And my last item is, under G, lighting, number four. The technical term for it is dark sky compliant, and it should be in our zoning.
Yes, I have that, too.
Yes, you're right. Hooded and downward-facing, doesn't cut it.
Yes.
Dark sky compliant is a light fixture that doesn't provide any light above the horizontal, so...
You got that?
That's for the turtles, right?
For the turtles, that's right.
Okay, and you're good?
I'm good.
Got it.
Yeah, under parking lifts, seems to me if someone puts in a parking lift, we should have some sort of review to make sure it stays operational. If it's not operational, we've lost some parking.
Ooh, yeah. True.
Well, we have to have an elevator repairman that's got to fix it, no?
I don't know how to do this, but...
I have something on seventy-six dash nineteen.
Hang on, Katie, you have that parking lifts must remain operational?
Yep, parking lifts shall be maintained and operable through the life of the project.
There we go. And...
Seventy-six dash nineteen, are we getting ready to move past that?
Katie, are you up to nineteen, or are we getting ahead of you?
Yep, I'm there now.
Okay, so, Mike, what section are you in?
E, concrete curbs, another exciting subject.
Hold on, are you, do we have to do anything before concrete curbs? Okay, then we'll go right to concrete.
I have one before that, but I'll go back to it.
We'll go back, go ahead, concrete curbs.
Number one, concrete curbs, raised concrete curbs will be a minimum of four inches high by four inches deep. It's a new standard due to all the cars being five inches off the ground in the nose now.
Four by four.
It's an acceptable, it's a Caltrans acceptable bumper, and the six is passe.
Are we all okay with that, four by four?
I can hear the plastic air dam scraping right now.
Okay, and who wants to go back?
I want to go back, Dennis, go ahead. Okay, would someone point out a parking lot that has one tree for every five parking spots? Anywhere in the city?
Live and dead?
We had, the mall has one for every two.
Every two?
Mm-hmm.
No.
No, no way.
The previous code was one for every two, it's been loosened at one per every five.
There's one for every two parking spaces in the mall?
No, in the code, in the code.
It's never been built that way.
What did the forty-first standing design guidelines say? It was one for two at one point.
The code currently says one per two.
And the planning commission relaxed it to?
Relaxed it to one per five.
That's still pretty high-density, you think about it. I went in front of McDonald's in there, and I kind of laid it out, and that's one per ten. And that's probably one of the highest tree areas I think we have. So I just thought maybe if they were built that way...
So are we okay with one per five? Yeah, I like it, one per five.
I have a question, though, about now number three underneath, the shade trees.
Go ahead.
Shade trees shall be of a type that can reach maturity within fifteen years of planting and shall be selected from the city recommended list. Why do we have to wait fifteen years? Can't we cut that down to seven and a half? Are there faster-growing, I don't have any expertise in this, but are there faster-growing trees? So they don't plant little sticks, and we have to look at those for fifteen years?
I do know a little bit about trees, and faster-growing trees are typically not as strong of a tree. So your eucalyptus tree is very fast-growing, they're trees that often break easily. So I would, I don't think it's a bad quality in a tree if it grows slowly.
To be nurtured.
To be...
We could increase...
In theory, but in practice, when you look at what people plant, they're sticks.
Stephanie, we can increase the box size of the tree to forty-eight instead of twenty-four, and that would give us maturity from day one. More maturity from day one.
That would help a lot.
Better chance of surviving.
Or thirty-six.
I do want to get it. How about thirty-six? I would think that would be...
Forty-eight, yeah, I mean, crazy to bring them in.
Landscaping parking lots, you know, there's tension with it. You know, I mean, it's nice to see some trees in there, but you're also occupying area with trees that could otherwise be used as parking. It does reduce heat island effect, but at the same time, it increases water consumption. So it's different things to consider when setting your landscaping standards for parking.
I was trying to be a problem solver for... I think a thirty-six inch box is, and that's a pretty sizable box.
It is, I mean, I'm starting to think of forty-eight-inch trees in there.
It's a standard, you know? Big commercial job.
Well, what we were doing with that area was transforming it from a rural area to a very, very urban area, and so we really wanted lots of trees to soften it. If we were going to do that to the community, we wanted it to look very attractive, and that's why we had this very strong tree ordinance, so that it would look very, very attractive. And at the time, the developer said it's going to look like a forest in ten or fifteen years, you're not going to see them all. And we said, then come talk to us, and we'll let you thin some of them out, if that's the case.
Trees help us breathe.
And we never did hear from them after that, so...
When the city puts a palm tree in the village, what size box is that that goes in there?
I think the simplest answer is it varies, but I'm sorry that it's not more specific, but I think in general, they're pretty small.
So between a twenty-four, thirty-six, or forty-eight, what would be your best guess?
Less than twenty-four.
The root barriers are generally about forty-eight inches.
So I'm thinking that thirty-six is a pretty substantial tree to start off with. Go ahead, John.
So Stephanie's talking about trees, canopy, what do we want? So I think of Kings Plaza, I mean, you know, that's a pretty high-density tree area, it looks really nice, as opposed to the mall. So that's sort of what we're dealing with right now.
Well, one tree for every five parking spots is a grove.
What do you think we have in Kings Plaza? I just don't know.
It should be the same requirement, but just they may have taken...
There are older trees, I think, but, you know, it's quite pleasant.
It's a type of tree, too, has a thicker, heavier canopy than...
So do we have a number on the box? I didn't hear if there was a consensus.
Thirty-six, okay?
Can we live with thirty-six?
Yeah.
Good.
Thirty-six it is.
Any other comments on this chapter?
I have one on twenty-two, the last page. For bicycle parking spaces, if they're covered and permanent, they have to be designed to protect the bicycle from rainfall and at least seven feet above the floor or ground. There's some bike parking areas down at the transit center on Pacific Avenue. Are those seven feet high, where you can lock your bicycle inside there?
No.
I think they're shorter, but I didn't, I don't know, I haven't been down there for a while.
That doesn't, that doesn't sound right.
This sentence here, this whole thing does, and this whole item here is...
Anyway, I think we could get by with something smaller and not so imposing as a seven-foot box structure somewhere to lock your bicycle in.
How about you strike the last part of that sentence, just say, "Be permanent, designed to protect the bicycle from rainfall."
How about that?
Yeah, yeah, whatever works.
Can we just put period after rainfall?
Because there might be, that may be an area that's evolving, and new structures are coming up all the time that are attractive for downtown areas and...
Okay, are we good with that?
Yeah, I want to go back a page, I want to add one more thing to the bicycle thing.
I just want to close that out, go ahead, Dennis.
Okay, that is, City Santa Cruz does this, is that when you do a multifamily residential project, you're required so much open space, you're required so much, and one of the items that they require is so much space for storage and also for bicycle storage, that's out of, so, in other words, when we're allowing multifamily, we should provide that there's be some square footage for bicycle storage, just as we do for the automobile. And so you may have to build your garage two feet deeper, maybe that, you may store it in there, or you have a separate shed, but you have to provide it, in multifamily, you have to provide for covered safe. And that safety is an issue here with bicycles, they get stolen very high in this county. So allowing for safe and weatherproof storage be allowed within each, for each unit within the development, the multifamily.
Where are you reading that, Dennis? I'm trying to...
No, I just wrote it.
He wants to add it.
I just want to add, I read that you provide covered, you allow within the development an area for a watertight, safe bike storage.
Provide space for bike storage.
Bike storage, yeah. That takes care of this next one here, too.
Currently, at the bottom of page twenty, and it extends into page twenty-one, bicycle parking spaces are required, they're short-term and long-term. For multifamily dwelling, the short-term parking spaces are ten percent of the required automobile spaces with a minimum of four. So that's if your friend's coming by your multifamily apartment, they can put their bike there. Long-term spaces, it's one per five units, so it sounds like you would like to increase that as one per unit, so each unit has...
I think there should be one per unit in this town.
Each unit has dedicated a place for their bicycle.
Right now, we ask one for five, and you want to increase it?
Every unit should have their own individual parking. What you're talking about is a two-foot by six-foot space somewhere included in...
Wait, every unit should have a bicycle parking space?
That's what he's asking. Right now, we require one for every five units, he wants to make it one for every unit.
And what it is, is it's within each of the units. In other words, you would design it into your garage or storage area that you have. So you're required to have a bicycle storage within your, within your unit.
But it's called your garage. I mean, they already have it in their garage, that's where most people put their bicycles.
They do that, but this way, you're allowing for that.
I think what it's doing is you're just capturing more surface space, I'm just wondering about that being a little bit restrictive. Ben, any, any input on this? Is it, is this a normal standard, are we, are we...
I would say that the sort of dedicated long-term spaces for multifamily of one, one per five units is the standard these days when you see these being added to zoning codes. And I think it, it, it could be at the council's discretion to require more long-term parking spaces. I think there's some trade-offs, as you mentioned, to keep in mind.
Yeah. Opinions?
I agree, there's a lot of bike theft, definitely. And so if we're going to increase or promote the use of bicycles, this might add to that. So I think there's worthwhile considering. Maybe not for everyone, you know, maybe we could get one and two or something like that, but...
I'm thinking of it being more private than public, in ways right now it's public. You have a shared space that's outside with everybody else, and the person's usually, you don't get your bike in there. This allows, within your own development, and maybe, it could be part of your outside patio area, as long as it's, it's part of a storage area that's watertight and, and, and safe, I guess.
I'm just concerned about aesthetics, to a certain point also.
Well, you're, more than likely, what you're going to do is you're going to sign it into your garage yet. You probably add two feet to your garage. Most jurisdictions actually require, because them not, not wanting you to store stuff outside of your unit in multifamily, they require so many square, square feet or cubic feet of storage area within your unit to actually be storage. We don't have that requirement. But with a bicycle, and I think we're going to see more and more use of it, hopefully in our community, that having one bicycle per unit is, is not, is not underestimating what's there now.
I don't, I don't see that really, though. The apartments sitting next to me, and all the condos across from me, I see very few bicycles. And those that are there, I think they take them into their apartment, or take them into their condo. They don't leave them outside, you know, because they know that they could get stolen, and the locks cut and so forth.
There's different ways of storing bikes, rather than, you know, two wheels on the ground, you could have it up against the wall, skinny locker, something like that. So maybe there's other solutions that would make that work.
Is there another number that is like besides one for five or, or one for each? You're good with leaving it as is? Mike? Is it leaving it as is, or do you have a... Leaving it as is?
Yeah.
Scott?
I'd like to figure out some way to encourage you, I don't know that I have a good solution right now, Dennis.
I'm just kind of at a loss for how to quantify it.
Because I like the idea in general, definitely, but how to do it, I just don't know.
Well, if, if we're, if we're looking for alternatives to automobile, this is the most...
I would, I would agree with doubling to two to five, I would go to two to five, easily.
Well, the question to me is, is that, it, it, do you get assigned to that space with that, too? Or do you have to share it with everybody else? Because it's not possible to do what you're saying if you have to share it, see? My point is, is you have a private space within each unit.
Well, it's like visitor parking, you know, we require visitor parking for whatever the numbers are. This would just be having some provision, it wouldn't be your personal space, it would be one you would have access to. But I would increase, I would agree with, because we're promoting bikes to try to increase the number, I mean, at least. We have two that don't care, one that wants five, I'm up for two, Jacques, give an opinion.
I'll take two, I mean...
Can you live with two?
Two for the...
Come on up, Bob, there we go, you might sway somebody, we need a third vote.
You've got some free consultation, there's a big bike organization here of Greenway, maybe you're familiar with it. I'm sure they would love to weigh in on this issue. And it's something I think that's very important, I'm in line with Dennis's thinking. If we're going to promote less traffic, more bikes, we've got to give some kind of incentive, some kind of invitation to, to ride your bike. And if you come home and there's no place to park it, you're in the rain, you're going to pick up your car, right? So, Greenway is an organization, they have a new director, anybody know the organization? No, okay, I could get it, but they're all for bicycle enhancement in our county, and they're a pretty good organization. I don't know if you could table this for another discussion, but I think it's an important one.
Thanks, Bob, appreciate that.
Let's continue, it's a Saturday, maybe.
Jamie's a bike rider, let's hear from Jamie.
If I had my bike, I'd park it in my garage, is where I'd put it, okay? So I'm just worried about, you know, what we're doing outside. So I, I mean, I, I thought that, I thought from going to one to five to two to five was doubling it, that's a pretty big increase.
But do we even need to do that? You know, because I think that people, somebody has a nice bike, they're taking it in with them. They're taking it into their house, or they're taking it into their garage, you're not going to park it someplace outside, I don't think, in a public space.
That's what I see, and that's why it should be public.
Hang on, Kate, go ahead.
So I did once receive a phone call, and it was from the development across from the Jade Street Park, so very large residential development. And it was from somebody that was wondering, they, they would get in trouble if they locked their bike up outside, so they'd have to bring it into their unit. And they were asking about exactly this, is there, you know, is there any requirements for a multifamily to have parking for them that's enclosed? So at that point, the answer is no, you know, new developments that come in are required to have bicycle parking in our code, and this would make it more specific. So I have heard of the need, and I'll just add that to the conversation, that those, that call has come in before for that large, it's a very large apartment complex, so, or condo complex.
You had mentioned table, do you want table, you want to try to wrap that up? Jacques, go ahead.
I have no problem tableing until Saturday. But also, I have a feeling that an architect's going to come up with a solution that will meet that need, if we put the need in. So I don't see it to be a particularly difficult problem to solve. The only main thing is security, because once that becomes a known place where bikes are, and people are watching, oh, that good bike goes in there, it better be a very secure site. And a public, all that sort of thing, because I wouldn't put my bike in there unless I knew it was really secure.
I think what I'm leading to is it not be public bike, bike parking, it should be private, there should be private bike parking. And also, like within our parks and everything else in our program, we allow public parking there where you can tie your place up. Maybe in a larger development, you require that. But somewhere and somehow, they should, we should provide for, for private bike parking.
Let's ask at the league conference next week if any cities are doing that, that would be interesting to throw that question out.
Are we okay with pushing this till Saturday, just to ponder?
After league conference.
Okay, there we go, Saturday. We're going to table this one item.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we go back to the next page where Mike changes the wording on that sentence? What do we do with that, Mike?
The wording on the bike...
Seventy-six twenty-two.
I just put a period after it and struck the rest of the sentence. It said, if bicycle, if bicycle parking spaces are covered, the cover shall be permanent, designated to protect the bicycle from rainfall, period.
Correct.
Right.
Okay? Moving on.
Okay, moving on to signs.
I have one...
Hold on.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I want me to filter here. Seventy-six twenty-two, on the bottom, required loading spaces. So, I was just wondering, do we have any consideration for the proximity, I mean, to the actual spot? Hotel, warehouse, manufacturer, any others involved in frequent stops? And also, there might be several businesses in that area, does that mean every single business has to have loading in front of it? You know, so, you know, I've seen places where there's one loading area, and then everyone shares it on that block. So to require that they all have a loading thing, so I'd just like to put that out for...
Depends on the type of business, probably.
Yeah, right, that's what I mean. So I'd like to give planning some...
I'd like to give planning some discretion on this.
And we have problems with this area, you know, applying this?
Not to my knowledge, in any recent applications. For, under location, there's some provisions that it not be too close to residential. And then under dimensions, there's an allowance for deviations that can be approved by the planning commission. So I think there is some flexibility built into the standard.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let's close out that chapter and on to signs.
If you're ready.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
I'm ready for you.
Go on to some...
Since I was a latecomer to this, do we have a determination of how long, or do we have a goal, or where we're trying to get to? Just curious.
As you came late, we're going to go to midnight.
That's fine, I just, I just want to be on board with where we, where we are.
No, we have people in the audience, we go as long as we walk.
That's fine, did you, was there any discussion, or did you have a goal?
We're going to finish part three tonight. Just kidding.
So we can fall asleep in the audience.
We can stay as long as we want, or as short as we want.
No, we can, we can go through signs and recheck in and see where we're at.
Okay, fine, let's do signs, and we'll have, I'll ask that question again. Okay.
So within signs, I'll just mention that the planning commission did spend a lot of time on signs, and went through this section very meticulously. I had a few comments made by council members tonight that I'll bring up in a slide presentation. One of the biggest things that's occurred within the sign standards is that we put strict administrative permit standards up front. So the, the new, like, base approval for an administrative permit is pretty strict. And then if you want to go beyond those standards, that's when you go for a planning commission permit. So we made the base standards pretty strict, and that someone could come in and get an admin over-the-counter permit. But if you want to go beyond that, you have the ability to, but it's going to require planning commission approval. So when you're looking at these, keep in mind that that's for an administrative permit, and to go further, it requires city council. So sign permits that are required to have planning commission or any that don't comply with the sign standards, there's also special standards built in for the auto dealerships that are otherwise not allowed. And then adjustments to the sign standards in low-visibility areas, that's something that exists today for areas of low visibility. And then master sign programs would also need approval by the planning commission. Signs, so I'm just going to, I've got slides just based on topics that were requested to bring up, and my first one is on page eighty-five. So if there's any comments on signs before eighty-five, we can take those now. First, signs allowed without a permit. Number five says one bulletin board on a parcel occupied by a non-commercial place of public assembly with a maximum area of twelve square feet. So this does not need a permit, but is it really necessary to list a bulletin board in your sign code?
The only place I can envision this is perhaps a mobile home park multi-use building.
And I was thinking maybe a church would have a bulletin board, I don't know, but... Do you want to keep that? I wouldn't really consider that a sign, a bulletin board, maybe an informational...
The fact that you had to struggle for those two examples, I think that it probably could be omitted.
The kiosk we put in is covered under this.
I know. Well, it jumped out at me when I first read this, because I thought, what are we, why are we regulating bulletin boards under a sign ordinance? Bulletin boards are usually small and personal, and we don't have them commercially, usually. And so I didn't think it really belonged in our, in our sign ordinance. So people that want to have a bulletin board, have a, have a bulletin board.
That's what this says.
So this would avoid a dispute for our kiosks down in the village?
Good.
So...
Okay, so I would be in favor of removing.
Remove?
I don't see why it's not, just leave it in there.
We can leave it, if it's like...
Oh.
This is a special to remove.
It specifies it, and it says without a permit, so...
So just leave it?
Go for it.
Leave it. Leave it?
Really, people are going to come in for a permit for a bulletin board?
No, but this...
This makes it easier.
Protects our kiosk.
Then thinking about it. Should they read the entire zoning code to get to this part? Leave it?
Fine. It looks like we're in consensus with leaving.
Okay.
That's silly for it.
And in this, next, this is page eighty-seven. Under prohibited signs, T, signs attached to balloons greater than fifteen inches in diameter are prohibited, so...
If that's just a prohibited sign? Just like little air guy in front of them, yeah, none of those either.
I think the suggestion was, should all balloon signs be prohibited? Is that, that was brought up by Vice Mayor Harland?
I don't see why they shouldn't be prohibited.
The car, the car dealers are the main ones that use it.
Ooh, well, that, is that a sign, or just to get attention?
Well, that's what you're calling balloons, that's a sign.
Well, we don't want signs attached to balloons. If they want to have a balloon, I, you know, that's, that's, I'm not crazy about that, but that's what they have. But I don't want signs attached to balloons particularly. Is a balloon attached to the sign?
Our dealership, they just have balloons.
You've never seen a balloon, a sign attached to a balloon?
Do we know, do we have an example of signs attached to balloons? Do we know of any?
Rich? Our code enforcement is evidently working.
Give us some, an idea?
And there we go.
No, we could use that, okay?
I love that.
It's only fourteen inches.
Why that?
It's something new for the arch, archway coming in for the... Okay, so we don't have them in this town, we had to go to the internet to find it, it's okay.
So just leave it as is?
Yeah.
No, let's take it down, or remove the fifteen inches.
Yeah, all balloon signs are prohibited, that's my motion.
Well, it did, no, just your suggestion, are you okay with all signs, all balloon signs prohibited? Prohibited balloon signs?
Yeah.
All balloon signs prohibited is a consensus.
And take this one, take T out, signs attached to balloons.
Balloon signs only last a day, they don't last more than a day. How are you going to enforce that?
No, there, no, there was a big one on top of...
No, balloons are okay, it's just balloon signs.
There was a huge one on top of Zeldas for weeks, there was a big one over at, at the mattress store for weeks, until we, we clamped down on them, I mean, huge, huge, huge.
Aren't those, aren't those, are things, are, we can call?
Yeah.
The Corona bottle.
Yeah, it was a big Corona bottle, very ugly.
So did we, did we remove T, is that what we did?
I think you still want to prohibit balloon signs, is what I'm hearing. And I would suggest writing that up as prohibited as inflated balloons or inflatable signs.
Yeah, because you wouldn't call that a big Corona thing a balloon necessarily, it's something else.
Correct.
Okay, next is auto dealer signs, page eighty-nine. This is up for discussion by Vice Mayor Harland. The planning commission may allow temporary auto dealership signage, such as signage on light poles and flags and pennants that deviate from the temporary sign standards in seventeen eighty-one-ten, with the approval of a sign permit. So when you go to seventy-eighty-one-ten, it's a table. And there's allowances for temporary signs specific to the auto dealerships. So anything that deviates from what's allowed within that table would require a sign permit and go to planning commission.
Kate, can you give me that table again, since...
So the table's actually on page eighty-two-three.
Okay.
It's quite a ways forward.
Yeah, well, the flipping fast enough, thank you, okay.
And you'll see under the first thing on the table, it says auto dealership signs, flags, pennants, and balloons. There's no permit required, we may want to strike balloons with our, unless you want to allow them just in the auto dealerships.
I don't know that I want to take balloons away from auto dealerships, because they use them very routinely.
Yeah. And it's only auto row, and that is a place unto itself.
Yeah, I, I don't...
I have no problem with that.
I, I, nor do I. Good with the balloons on, yeah. No reason to create a problem, it doesn't exist, so...
So anything beyond these standards would require going to planning commission, is basically what that standard on page nine, eighty-nine states.
And they were okay with that, that's the planning commission...
Planning commission was okay with it.
It seems to make sense. Any, any concerns about that?
No.
Okay, we're good with that.
That as is. And that's the only comments I had for the sign.
I got, I got one.
Oh, there was, go ahead.
Please. What do we have against neon?
There's an allowance for neon.
There is? How's that work?
And let me get to the right section.
Okay, just looking that up, I can note that we had a fair amount of discussion at the planning commission about it. I think they generally had a desire to limit the amount of neon signs. Although I think they acknowledge that in some cases, they're very appropriate and look cool. And one thing I've observed since that discussion is a number of neon signs are really out there that I may not have noticed otherwise. But even in the village, you know, you have the hotels that have neon, some of the bars in the esplanade have neons in the windows. So they are out there right now.
So I picture someday the Wharf Restaurant, and that big marlin that goes like this.
That's different, how, how does it go? How does it go? That's neon art. Neon art is different. It's different than twenty Coors signs in the face of Zelda's.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that's a whole different thing.
Marlins, Coors.
Search for neon.
I have a whole page that I'd like to talk about. No one else wants to talk about signs? Are we, did you want to have more discussion on neon?
For neon, there is an allowance. The planning commission went back after their red lines and re-discussed neon. That'll be in your next update.
Okay.
It's now on the web, on the website, on the most recent changes to the sign, but there is an allowance.
We have to allow for change, it's a fifteen-year document.
Yeah.
Neon will come back, just a matter of time, so.
I'm here.
Is he yielding to you?
Yeah, so the way the code is drafted in, on page eighty-three, under sign permits B two, exterior neon signs are allowed, but requires planning commission approval of a sign permit.
There you go. And I got orders backing up here, Stephanie.
Sorry.
Josh, go ahead.
I just have to bring up something that I almost hate to bring up because I don't want to bring attention to it, but how does this section of our zoning code deal with signs that people put up for like garage sales, lost cats? You know, I mean, it's a serious thing in that, you know, it gets on polls, maybe litmus, but some people feel they're illegal. They serve a great function in the town to alert people to things that they definitely want to go to, perhaps like a garage sale or something of that sort. So I just want to know where it's dealt with, to be clear, and if we don't like it, maybe we could address it in terms of changing it.
Page eighty-two-three is the temporary sign standards. Within that, there's the for sale, lease or rent signs.
I didn't see anything about garage sales or general notifications like a lost pet, for instance.
I believe actually that, let me check if it's listed under signs that do not need a permit.
Okay.
We had a situation, two years ago, we had a community-wide garage sale and a misinformed city employee went down around all the neighborhoods and took all the signs down for the garage sale.
Yeah, right.
So we do have an active public works department that takes signs down.
Yeah. Well, I think there's a time to take them down, especially if they're old signs, but I mean, you know, to make a person get a permit for a garage sale sign?
No, that's shit.
That's kind of silly.
They're just going to do it.
I don't think that's.
Right, or your lost pet, I mean, how long, something, the coyotes in town, I mean, I've seen a lot of those things recently.
You were looking for signs that don't need a permit, Katie, that's what you were trying to find, or?
So we've got the real estate signs that are, you know, that's a business that we, if we have a problem with it, we can go after and do some code enforcement, but for garage sales, I'm not seeing anything in the ordinance. If you'd like it to be in there, we can list it under that temporary table so that we make sure they don't stay up too long. We could add a provision that they are down within a week.
Isn't our city ordinance that you're only allowed three garage sales a year?
Yeah, well, let's get to that later, but.
There is an ordinance, I don't recall if it's two or three, but we do limit it.
So yeah, I think including something like this with city planning, you know, figure out a way to do it. I mean, people have a need to put up temporary signs for a variety of things, and I think there should be allowance for that. And certainly I agree, they shouldn't stay up there for a long period of time.
It'd seem like those garage sale signs would be in that ordinance that limits how often they can have them.
What's the, what's the regulation on real estate signs, open house signs?
They are, an open house is one per property and one on another property with the owner's consent. Their height can be up to four feet, an area of six feet, maximum duration limited to the day of the open house.
So they can do one onsite and one offsite?
Mm-hmm.
Two signs.
They're not supposed to be on the sidewalk, but they end up on the sidewalk.
So the garage sales, if it's been a problem, maybe we place that in the code, but if it's something that you'd rather staff not regulate, I wouldn't, you know, typically you put in your code what you want to make sure is controlled, and I don't, I don't know if it's a problem.
It's not really a problem, it's a problem they stay up. The other reason is it's on a Saturday or Sunday in most cases, and there's no staff to go around and do it or to even take care of that, so I don't, I don't know it's a problem.
I don't think it's a problem, but some people think it's not allowed, and I've heard people tell me that, so that's where.
Well, they're not supposed to post it on public property, on the telephone poles, but we don't give them a ticket for doing that or really enforce it. That's the issue is, they want to put it on their private property, that's fine, but they're putting it on public property, which they don't.
Well, yeah, that's where you put garage sale signs.
Right.
Public property.
Technically, it's not allowed, but we don't really enforce it.
Well.
To be clear, so what we're talking about, I think, with garage sale signs is putting something on public property, right? So it has already covered within our streets and highways, the road section of our code, and it does say that they're not allowed, they're not allowed to put up a sign on public property. Now practically, obviously, this isn't something that's actively enforced. When we get complaints, it is something that we do enforce, so I think my suggestion would probably, the status quo is about as good as you can do, because if we get in the business of issuing temporary garage sale signs on telephone poles, boy, that just sounds to me like a hornet's nest.
No, no, I don't want to issue permits of that, I just don't want to have people think that they can't do it and don't have garage sales and stuff like that.
We'll take a look at chapter twelve and about installing private improvements. And so I think technically it isn't allowed to put up something on public property. I think it's a question of scale, frequency, and whether it becomes an issue. Stephanie, go ahead.
I have a question on eighty-ten, under awning signs, number three, at the top of the page. An awning sign that projects over a public walkway or walk area shall have an overhead clearance of at least eight feet. I'd only bring this up because when David Ling did a little remodel and they put the awning out there, at first we said, no, you can't do that, and then they showed us pictures of everybody else who had put awnings out totally over the sidewalk practically, and it was kind of a privacy issue. So anyway, is eight feet standard, is that, is that?
It's a current code requirement, I believe it's rooted in ADA requirements.
Okay, that's my only question.
Any other questions on signs?
Yeah.
Yes?
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's the last one.
Eighty-eighteen.
Eighty-eighteen.
He's been waiting for this, it's supposed to be decided.
I think we need to universally, and this is one of my strong points.
Okay.
Eliminate all panel illuminated, rear illuminated signs in the entire city regardless of where they are.
What number are you reading there, Mike?
Six.
Six.
Okay. Internally illuminated signs. What's an example?
Any flat plastic panel where the entire surface becomes illuminated by the internal illumination. We know what it is, they slide into the box, the light is behind the box, inside the box, and it's just glaring, and it is, we've often required them to have backlit letters, you know, halo lit letters, or a frontlit sign. But large plastic panel signs that are universally lit behind should be eliminated from the city completely.
One example is Kings Plaza, they're talking about upgrading their signs, but they've got the big signs that, they just switch out the face when a new company comes in.
Okay, lighted box, just change, change the plastic.
Lighted box, no more anywhere. But that's a master sign permit there. So that's not something that would be dealt with under this section, I'm talking about a new sign.
Existing ones are fine, no more new signs.
No new panel, plastic internally lit box signs.
I think that's a great idea.
Period.
So do I understand you correctly that if somebody has an existing one, we'd be okay with allowing them to change the face of it and keep it? Okay.
The name, if the business changes, but no adding of a new sign.
I mean, I'm not trying to put an undue burden on a business.
Sure.
But we have plenty of sign contractors coming in here with applications, and the cheapest, worst sign you can put in a city is an internally illuminated box sign.
So it's the cheapest one?
It's the cheapest one.
Any problem with that?
No.
No, it's good.
Stephanie?
No, it's good.
So let it be. Say, no more number six.
Next item, I'll wait till the staff catches up.
They're catching up. You got no more number six?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No more number six.
But individually, hand channeled letters are okay. We're not saying no more internal illumination, just no more internally illuminated boxes.
Right, so individual letters, either halo lit, individually lit, without the rest of the sign being lit, or lit from the front.
Replacement of name is okay in an existing box.
The last sentence in that same section, illumination may not exceed five foot candles of light, forgive me, Steph, that sentence has no meaning. It does not, it's like saying apples can't be too orangey. There's no, it's not telling us anything. Five foot candles means nothing. It's not talking about the density of light, it's not talking about the maximum light, it's not talking about the light shed, it's not talking about the light spread. I won't argue with things like lumen density or efficacy of the sign, which is how much light gets out of it, but you need a better standard, you can, and you can find it. I think that, is that illumination may not exceed five foot candles of light for the entire surface of the sign? That'd be kind of silly. Is that measured at the sign? That's silly, too. Is it measured from the ground? So we just need a better, I know what you're going for. You don't want a sign that's so bright that it is distracting when cars drive by or people walk by, so we just need to get together and get better standards. I can send you some links.
Great. I actually reached out to a sign company and tried to figure out what is the good standard, and I think they wanted it, I don't know that this answer is best, is there, what type of standard would you utilize to measure the brightness of the light?
You could use lumens per square foot.
Lumens per square foot, yeah.
But it's, it's, it's going to get too technical, it's called flux density, you don't want to go there. I think maybe measuring from the ground to the sign at a certain distance might be a good standard, that it shall not illuminate the ground higher than, you know, half a foot candle per square foot from ground level, ten feet from the sign? I don't know, well, let's come up with something. But let's try and make it so it means something, this is.
It struck a nerve, I can tell, I can tell.
Sorry, I'm sorry. That's all I have to say, just maybe we could tune that up a little bit.
We'll look for some other language.
Stephanie?
I have a question on eighty-twenty-two, if we're there. Someone has one before that.
No, go ahead, we can do that.
Okay, residential signs, number eight, home occupancy and vacation rentals, one single wall-mounted outdoor sign, if not more than one square foot, an area permitted. There again, you know, I don't want big, I don't really like big signs on, in houses saying that it's a home occupancy business. They could have a smaller sign, they could have something half this size. One of my neighbors had one, it just makes it look, area very commercial to have signs. And then for vacation rentals, same thing. We don't need to have big signs, we can have little signs, people are finding them anyway.
I thought we settled that we're going to go to eight and a half by eleven.
Yes, and that was in the transient rental overlay, so we will make sure, I found another section here that also needs to be updated, I think it's page eight, and we'll modify that to eight and a half by eleven.
I would like to put that one on hold if we cancel Saturday because I had a serious complaint from beach house rentals who just printed up all their new signs, twelve by twelve, and they are planning on coming here and speaking to us on that. So in light of a company that is well represented in this town, and I wasn't really comfortable with even shifting on that one, I think we should wait on that until we.
How many signs did they order?
Thirty, forty, fifty, something like that.
That's my point, I don't want to see fifty big signs around town, that's too many.
Well, like I said, I would, based on the, on the company, I would, I would like them, allow them to come and speak and then hold off our, because I know we struggled with that one, we had all kinds of discussion. Maybe they need to come in and show us the sign. I saw the signs, we know the owner, and I said, please come to the meeting on Saturday, which he's going to do, and I would say at least we should hear the presentation and then make a decision following that.
Well, I'd be, I'd be happy letting him have it for now, but in five years, I would want something smaller when those signs are getting worn out or something like that.
Residential signs, no limit?
Which page?
Which number, Mike? Or still on eighty-twenty-two?
Well, I mean, you don't see that many home occupancy use signs because most of them are kind of under the radar, because a lot of them don't even have permits or a business license, but the ones that may, I don't really want to see a big sign like that on a house particularly. They can have a little sign that says accountant or counselor or tax, you know, tax help or whatever they want to have. They don't, people are finding them not by walking around or walking or driving down the street, they're, they're private businesses that these people have, and they don't need a big sign. They're not, they're not a, they don't need that kind of exposure, I don't think.
My concern is that, you know, we, as we're doing these and we, and we advertise what we're talking about, a lot of people don't find out about it. When I did make that mention, I think it's just this Saturday, which is something we're trying new to begin with, the Saturday meeting, is a good opportunity for people to come in and let us know what they think rather than us randomly making rules that we don't maybe have a buy-in on, so let's just.
We put off the sign. Once again, residential signs, under two, it says no limit, that's a scary sentence.
Yes, should that be one sign?
I would think.
For residents?
I would think.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah.
Where's the limit?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is from our old code, just carried over, but I think that's a very good catch.
So number two would be one sign?
One sign.
Everybody good? One sign, Katie?
I've added one sign to number two.
Okay.
Okay.
Mike, you're done with your page?
Done. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Dims.
Okay, in nineteen eighty-four, I was Karen's appointment to the planning commission. And we, she didn't hear me.
Karen, did you hear that?
Did you hear that, Karen?
In nineteen eighty?
Thirty-two years ago, thirty-two years ago, I was your appointment to the planning commission.
So Karen is that, Karen, you started this?
Can't take it back.
It was you?
Can't take it back. Well, anyway, that year, during that term, I, we actually created the sign ordinance for the city, that's the last time it was created. And in that, up to that year, almost every other building on Forty-first Avenue had twelve, fourteen, sixteen-foot freestanding signs all the way up and down that avenue. And it came a real shocker to the community at the time, we said, you know what, from now on, anything on Forty-first Avenue has got to be lower than six feet tall. It transformed that avenue into, not because of its cars, but because of its visual character today, is a fairly, fairly nice visual corridor to drive through. It's because of those signs coming down there. So I think it was a great move by the city to take it down. We only made one mistake in recent years, and that is, we allowed, we allowed an exemption from that rule, and that was the theater property. We allowed two of them, we wanted, the new one they're building now and the one up on the avenue, we allowed that one to stay in place and the other one, everything else got amortized out of it. The people who own those businesses had to take their signs down to six feet. You drive down the avenue, you notice there's no freestanding signs on the street. I don't want to see, I'd like to see it so that doesn't happen again. I don't think there's any excuse to have signs above that ordinance. It's worked really well for that, for that whole, that whole area there, and we should hold strongly to that.
Yeah, agreed.
You don't like the marquee?
It's, it's a, it's our only movie theater.
Yeah.
The movie theater's got things as well.
Okay. Anything else?
Like the historic preservation?
Is that another chapter, are we going to regroup?
Yep, that's another chapter.
Are we ready to do another chapter?
That's a big.
Let's end after that one.
I'd like to take more time with historic preservation personally, I, I mean, I have no problem doing more work tonight, but historic preservation, we need to be fresh for that one.
Would you want to wrap up now?
We could.
Might as well.
We could start it.
Katie, we're gonna, I don't see us finishing it.
I don't see us finishing it.
We're gonna hold off and start fresh on historic preservation.
Can I, can I ask one thing?
Certainly.
Can we, can we have like a ten-minute explanation by Katie of this, and so we'll take it home with us?
Yeah.
Sure.
Katie, can we have a ten-minute presentation so we can take something home with us?
Yes, this is one...
We want a break, but you want...
This, this chapter, I actually put some slides together to explain because I know it's a kind of a big undertaking for our new zoning code update, so I'd be glad to. So, historic preservation, what we were directed to do during the issues and options was take our current practice, put it into the code, and make it easy for the public to understand and for applicants to understand. So, many of the red lines you see that occurred is really to get that language to a point that it's really self-explanatory of what the city, what the city's asking when an applicant walks in the door. So, for historic preservation, the code outlines two types of historic resources. There's designated historic resources. Those are the resources that are in your national register and your state register. And then, or they're contributing structures that have been designated by the city council previously. So, there's, we have a list of those. Potentially historic resources are within the code on a list that will be maintained by the community development department. So, this is not, um, anything that's, um, a list that's a hundred percent bought into and adopted at this point. It's a potential list in which when an applicant comes in, if they're on the potential list, they're, they're told they're on the potential list, and they have to follow the ordinance for potentially historic resources. So, what does this look like? On the left, you see the Six Sisters. They're a historic landmark, and I'm sorry, that should say, um, a designated resource. And on the right is the potentially historic resource of one of the properties up on Depot Hill. So, um, how this applies to your designated historic resources, we'll start with those first. When an applicant comes into the city, the applicant can be the city council, it can be the planning commission, or the property owner. The first person to review the application will be a state-certified architectural historian to do an assessment of, um, the historic resource. So, this is if you wanna add or remove the historic resource from the designated historic resource status. The decision is, after the certified architectural historian reviews it, they provide staff with that review, and the staff will take that to planning commission with the, and the planning commission will make a recommendation. So, if somebody wanted to remove one of the Six Sisters from the historic list, it would go to planning commission, they would make a recommendation, and then the city council would have the final say on whether or not that can be removed as a designated historic resource in Capitola. So, Superintendent Building is another example. Um, and then the structures that are in any of our residential, uh, the historic, like Lawn Way, the historic district for Lawn Way, or the River View, any that are found to be contributing to the district. Um, next is main, the maintenance for the potential historic resource list. This is the, this list is, uh, would be maintained by the community development director and with a recommendation by the city, I'm sorry, a state-certified architectural historian. So, to add it to the list, it must exhibit one or more of the criteria within the code that's listed under that. And then, if somebody, if, if we were to go through a, um, recommendation to add something to the list and the owner didn't want to be added to the list, they could appeal that decision. If there are findings to support it, it could be appealed to the planning commission. If they agreed that it should be added to the list, it would just get added to the list administratively, and nothing would go, nothing would happen after that. Uh, to be removed from a list, the property owner would submit an application to the, and it's a community development director decision. So, they have the image of the building that was across the street. In the scenario, the architectural historian would take a look at that and say, it's not significant, it's not contributing to any district, it, um, doesn't meet the criteria. And then, they would provide that documentation to the community development director, and the community development directors, the keeper of the list, would take that property off the list. When an applicant comes in to modify a historic structure, um, for a designated list, I'm sorry, it says historic landmark on my slide, but for a designated site, the, um, the alteration, an alteration permit would be required. If it's on the historic structures list, so the, or the, um, the potential historic resource, it would, if it, if it, if, if the work already requires a discretionary review by the planning commission, then that would have to be reviewed by the planning commission. If it was a small addition off the back of the home that's less than four hundred square feet or not visible under the new code and does not require planning commission review, it would not be required to have planning commission review. If staff looked at the addition and had concerns and thought it could negatively impact the historic structure, and therefore it wouldn't, um, meet the SEQA exemption, that's another instance in which staff could say this needs to go to planning commission for review. But if it doesn't need an, um, a discretionary approval, it typically won't go before the planning commission for those. So, that, that's a little looser than how we go through those right now, and it would be, um, in line with the new, um, review criteria for planning commission.
My primary concern is going to be, how comprehensive is the list? When will someone know either purchasing or, or getting ready to consider remodeling if they are on the list? And will they be able to get ahold of the list? And what I'm, what I, my real focus is making sure that just by the mere suggestion by someone on Arcan Site that something might be historic, that it doesn't stall the process completely. We should be in the business of informing new residents and current residents on whether or not they will be held to historic standards. It cannot be at the whim of one or two persons to guess that it might be because the amount of time, money, and effort involved in that mere suggestion is remarkable and is unfair to all property owners.
So, the list will be available to the public at the community development department?
So, if it's not on the list, there will not be historic requirements upon remodel?
Correct. Yep. The only, uh, time you would ever run into an issue is if something was unknown about a house. So, if, if all of a sudden somebody of importance that was there vacation or, you know, if there was something tied to that home that was unknown and came out later, then that's the only time it would be questioned. I, I think that...
That's frightening.
It is, but unless, unless you've done a survey of the entire city and ruled out any possibilities and gone to that, that's a great undertaking by the city financially to do, then I can't answer that, I, I can't say that we've eliminated any scenario in which somebody may be added to that list.
To embellish a little further...
Please.
Um, staff would not proactively take an application, say, you know what? This looks historic to us, and we're gonna treat it as historic if there's been no contrary evidence in, in the record or in this list. But there's always the prospect of a SEQA challenge, and there's nothing that we could ever do about that. Somebody could come out of the woodwork, say, we think it's historic, here's evidence to that fact, and that would trigger some other level of analysis. But aside from that happening...
How do we propose to develop this comprehensive list? This, this mythical list that we speak of?
So, we do have a list. It's been around since, I believe, nineteen eighty-six. Um, at the time, I think Carolyn Swift, Catherine Galtieri, some other local historians or people with, uh, you know, some level of interest in history and architecture put this list together. From my perspective, it's a good screening tool. I've been in other jobs where the screening tool was, everything over fifty years gets an analysis. And, you know, that's...
Almost everything in Capitola.
Right. So, now we're looking at nineteen sixty, nineteen seventy track homes, um, you know, which doesn't make sense. So, at least this narrows it to houses that have some potential, you know, they're vernacular to a certain era.
How many homes are on our list? Three hundred?
I would say it's about twelve pages long and about twenty or so on...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's in the hundreds, I think. But many of those have, um, are gone, or we've had studies on, you know, over the years. It hasn't been updated since that time. So, it still has structures that have been demolished twenty years ago.
So, if someone were to come in with a parcel number, you could tell them if they were on the list?
Yes.
James?
So, what we're really talking about is, is the historic inventory, right? By Carolyn Swift and then, yeah, okay. Yeah, that's the most comprehensive document we have. And so, um, are we changing the process now where you're not gonna, we're not gonna get dual reviews by historians, or we're gonna only be subject to one?
So, that's really the process now. The only time that we get into that is if an applicant comes in proactively and says, I've done a historic analysis, I've hired my person, we're all good. We usually step back and want a peer review of that study.
Yeah.
But otherwise, there's no dueling.
Yeah, this is, well, there is only because we have one person who does the reviews and one person who sits on Arcan Site. But Arcan Site is...
So, yeah, I mean, the, the historian's role, and I think we've tried to distinguish that a little bit better in the new code, is really to give us kind of the capitola history, the inside of it, but not to make determinations of historical significance, which, you know, she, she's not really qualified to do that. And I don't think she does that for the most part, but she will raise her concerns.
So, um, does this also apply to, um, pla, places of historical significance, like a person who owned a house that was... I know we faced this a while back on Wharf Road, where it goes to the pier, those, that three-story place, and it turned out that, somebody can refresh my memory, it was the old mayor or somebody lived in the building there. Do you remember that? It was that...
Yeah, um, I, I think it was Frederick Keen had resided there at some point. You know, this is all from federal law, and it works its way through SEQA, and, and there's other state law that deal with historic, um, generally, it's, you know, if there's architectural significance, if it was associated with significantly historic people in the past or even events. And you could have landscapes that are significant, not just structures. So, it is kind of a broader spectrum. Most of those things we don't run into very often. And then, there's always the question, which is somewhat subjective, how important is a, you know, former mayor to Capitola? Does that make it historically significant? Uh, would it be if Harry Hooper lived there? Would it be if a former president lived there? You know, what's that line? And you probably get different opinions on it.
How, how much can we rely on that inventory, then? A hundred percent? Ninety percent?
Well, all it is is saying that more study needs to be done. You know, that it has...
Something we wanna undertake?
Oh, you mean to do, to do in the right way?
I'm talking about, I'm talking about in the process, historic inventory that we have now. Is that a hundred percent? Is that saying, that is all of the historic houses we have? Or is that saying, oh, that's only eighty percent or ninety percent?
You know, I, I feel pretty confident, and particularly, you know, having some knowledge of the people that put it together. I mean, they really cared about preserving the historically significant places in Capitola. I know they did a, a pretty thorough job of it. I, I doubt they missed much. I mean, time has passed. I suppose something could have happened since nineteen eighty-six that would make a place significant, but I, I think, you know, the chance of that's pretty low.
I remember at the time that, that they passed that through, one, the idea was, they entertained the idea of actually establishing a historic ordinance within the city of Capitola. And the, the owners of the properties didn't, didn't go for that. That was really, that, that kinda took a real quick death on the thing. Do we need to go through that process again, or should we just kind of accept the SEQA process itself as a protection?
Well, I think that's gonna be something, you know, it's gonna be a policy called the planning commission is highly interested in that. In fact, I think, um, if they had their druthers, that would be the next highest priority after the zoning code for staff to undertake. My intention is to return to the council once the zoning code is at least within, um, you know, we, we know that it's coming near an end and reassess what are our priorities? What is community development gonna work on, you know, once that's done?
Why, why would, why would a property owner sign on to that?
Tax advantages.
You could get tax advantage. You can do it without that. I mean, somebody could come in today and say, my house is historic, here's evidence, I wanna Mills Act tax break, and we would process, process that for them.
Is that available in Santa Cruz County?
It is.
It is.
And we've codified it in the draft code. It's not in our current code. It's still something we could do without it being codified, though.
But, but right now, going, just going backwards, is, is that we can count on that historic inventory of being the list of the historic houses in Capitola?
I'm comfortable using it as a screening tool. You know, if it's not on there, we're, we're, we make the judgment that we don't need to look at it any further.
But you said that there's also the, the SEQA challenge that would come behind it. The person making the challenge can't put that into effect at just a suggestion.
No, they need evidence.
There has to be some evidence.
That's correct.
Okay.
You know, they could hire another historian, a professional, and they say, I think it is historic. Now, now it's an issue that the city has to deal with. But it couldn't be opinion or unsubstantiated, you know, remarks.
I think Dennis is gonna try and get the tax break because I think the mayor used to live in your house.
My, my house was built in forty-two, so it qualifies.
Is that list available online, or could it be available online?
It can be available online. I don't think it's posted up there now.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? Do you have more of your presentation?
Yes, just, um, I have probably a couple more slides. So, if, if an alteration came in, it would be first reviewed by the state-certified architectural historian to make sure that it, um, doesn't have an adverse impact for SEQA. And then, the planning commission would review it and be the final decision-maker. City council would be, um, on appeal. And that does conclude my presentation, historic. So, we can go, we can start there on Saturday if you'd like.
Fresh and, we're gonna start at ten o'clock on Saturday morning? Ten? Ten, correct?
Mr. Mayor, before you adjourn, I did wanna take another moment of your time to talk a little bit about schedule. I'll try to be quick.
Sure.
So, as you recall, at the last turn, we talked a little bit about the schedule and, and the election cycle that's coming up. And I, what I heard was the majority of the city council had the desire, if it's possible, to get the zoning code adopted at least locally prior to the, uh, change to the new council. Um, so, we kinda put a schedule together. Our next meeting, of course, as you just mentioned, is gonna be Saturday, October first, with the city council. Um, October the sixth, the city, uh, excuse me, the planning commission is going to be reviewing the wireless chapter, a couple small cleanup items. Uh, it's our hope that we'll get a formal recommendation from them at that point on the changes they would like you to see, which you are actively reviewing at this time. On October thirteenth, uh, we have a regularly scheduled, uh, city council meeting. We'll bring, uh, a fair amount of zoning discussion there. That is really the cutoff for when we need to have the zoning code adopted by city council if we are gonna meet, um, to have it done before the council change is over.
Based on your schedule and the progress we made tonight, are we on track?
You know, uh, I think we're about fifty percent done. So, I, I, I think it's kind of a Herculean task at this point.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Possible. So, you know, under this schedule, um, the other thing to keep in mind is we have had some comments from the public and at least a couple of planning commissioners who would really like to see an extended public review period, once the council makes their edits that go out on the streets for thirty, sixty days. Under this schedule, that could not be accommodated. Uh, the soonest that we could put something out on the street, if the council gets done, would be October the twenty-eighth, and then sometime around November the seventh, give or take a couple of days, we would have to be before the planning commission for their final recommendation in order for you to do so by November twenty-second.
No, go ahead. I don't think that's enough time for public review, and I don't see why there's a rush to have this all finished before the council changes. And we're not talking about, you know, an enormous change, a, a majority change of the council regardless, and it shouldn't make a difference. And I think it could easily bridge the reorganization of the council in November, or December, I should say. Sorry.
This doesn't actually require discussion tonight. This was just after we went through and scheduled the special meetings. I asked the community development director to come back and just be transparent with what the deadlines were, so everyone was aware of them. You don't have to make a decision tonight.
Is there another reason? Is that deadline for another reason, or is it just an arbitrary?
No, it's just if, if the will of the council was to try to get it done while this council was still being seated, this is a timeline, so we'd have to meet. It would be difficult. It would have a shortened public review period, and we just wanna let the council, the planning commission, and members of the public know that.
I, I appreciate the chart because I think there was some discussion about trying to expedite the process, but the fact is, we can only move as fast as we can move. And the fact that you've described a Herculean effort, I'm not sure that's gonna happen. Uh, you know, we're, we're gonna move through at our pace, and we'll probably know much more at the end of Saturday where we stand, and, and we might even see right then that there's way too much to accomplish. So, I appreciate that there's a schedule. We may not meet that schedule, and if we don't meet that schedule, as Councilman Turmey said, I don't think the, the world's gonna fall apart. I'm, I'm more than willing to spend whatever time we needed to try, but at the end of I'm more than willing to spend whatever time we needed to try, but at the end of the day, if we don't meet the schedule, I think we're still okay.
I'd rather see a longer public review period.
And we can, and we can talk about that after, I think after Saturday, let's just bring this chart up again and see how we feel.
Sure.
Okay. Let's have a good Saturday.
I'd just like to point out something is that every meeting, the planning commission has had probably seven or eight of them, something on that line. Okay, maybe 10, 12 of them have been public hearings. Every meeting we've had here has been a public hearing. Okay? Okay? In the process from now until the completion here, if they can fulfill that, we'll have four more public hearings. Actually, more than that because we're going to have one tomorrow. We're going to have six more public hearings. But what's important is, is once the councils approved it and sent it back to the planning commission, they're going to have two public hearings before it comes back to the council again. There's two public hearings there. And then you're going to have the two, you're going to have two more with the city council before, and it can be done. So as far as public participation, there's never been a project in this city that has had that much opportunity for public participation, ever. And so I don't see, we're short-cutting the public at all. We adequately advertise these meetings, and right now you can advertise that schedule out there, that what we're going to do. That is something that somebody could take home and see exactly when we're going to be in meeting. So the public process has been very well fulfilled, if we, if we're able to conclude this in that time. I think that by carrying it to new councils, two problems with that.